And then I will ask those in attendance who oppose the application to please come forward to make their statements regarding the application. As this is a public hearing, it will be necessary for those coming forward to either ask questions or to speak for or against any application. Please identify themselves and state their name and address prior to proceeding. At the conclusion of all statements from the public and the applicants, I will close the public hearing on the application. The applicant and the public are then free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearings and the regular meeting, at which time the commission will discuss each application under consideration and try to reach a decision. Each applicant will be notified in writing as to the decisions of this commission. The applicant and/or any aggrieved party with legal standing will have the right to appeal this decision to superior court within the statutory timeframe if they so desire, and all decisions reached at this meeting will be available to the public the next day by either visiting or calling the planning and zoning office after 9:30 a.m. Seated this evening are the following Guilford Planning and Zoning Commissioners: David Grigsby, Walter Corvier, Amre Bower, Peter Golitz, Tom Koss, Joshua Hirschman. Town staff present this evening are George Croll, town planner; Reggie Reed, zoning enforcement officer; our recording secretary is Katie this evening; and the videographer is Shannon Gale. Will the secretary please read the legal notice?
Legal notice, Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on September 18th, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. in the Nathaniel B. Green Community Center, Minunkatuck Room, 2nd Floor, 32 Church Street, Guilford, Connecticut, for the following purposes. Number one, Algonquin Industries, property located at 129 Soundview Road, map 4-1, Lot 1, Zone I-2, coastal area management site plan approval for replacement of existing nitrogen tank, section 273-91. Number two, J.J. Sullivan, property located at 229 River Street, map 39, Lot 12, Zone C-4, coastal area management site plan revision to allow outside storage of empty propane tanks and other material at a distance in excess of 20 feet from a residential property line and the parking of propane delivery trucks on-site, section 273-97B. Number three, Fair Street Condominiums, property located between Number 19 and Number 33, Fair Street, map 39, Lot 29, Zone R-1, revision to special permit granted June 18, 1984, to remove Condition Number 6. Number four, Donald Ashford, property located at 118 Daniel Avenue, map 10, Lot 159, Zone R-2, coastal area management site plan approval for replacement of existing deck and stairs within 100 feet of critical coastal resource, section 273-91. Number five, Robert Opel, property located at 379 Old Whitfield Street, map 28, Lot 21, Zone R-3, special permit to allow accessory apartment in an accessory structure less than 10 years old, section 273-19. Number six, Highland House, property located at 84 Boston Street, map 40, Lot 40, Zone R-1, special permit for change in a special permitted use, replacement of existing shed at a museum, section 273-13D, Table 4, Number 15. Number seven, amend 273-2, word usage definitions, miscellaneous word definitions included in Table 5 of the zoning code. Number eight, amend Table 5 permitted uses in non-residential districts, comprehensive revisions of Table 5 in order to eliminate inconsistencies, update language, and generally conform with the intent of the various non-residential zoning districts and the plan of conservation and development. Copies of these applications are available for inspection in the Office of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Town Hall South, 50 Boston Street, Guilford, Connecticut. At this hearing, persons may attend and be heard, and written communications will be received. Dated at Guilford, Connecticut, this 28th day of August 2013, Ray Bower, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Walter. A couple of things before we get started. First of all, the J.J. Sullivan application has been withdrawn, so the only reason you're here this evening is because of the J.J. Sullivan application. That one will not be going forward. We have a full schedule tonight, especially with the amendments, so what I would propose to do is we take all of the other public hearing items up to the amendments, and we discuss and vote on those. We do have one site plan application which I were being asked to take, to receive and take action on. I'd like to do that, and then we'll open up the public hearing for the other two items and get as far as we can tonight. We may not finish them, but I would like to try to get at least the people that are here who want to speak for and against that this evening to be able to make their statements because they may not be able to make the next meeting if it gets continued. So with that said, let's start with the first item, Highland House, property located 84 Boston Street. This is a special permit to change, for a change in a special permitted use, replacement of an existing shed at the museum.
You have acquit on.
David's going to recuse himself on this one, so everybody is on with the exception of David. Is there someone presenting? Nobody presenting? Oh, please, sir, would you come up and explain what you'd like to do?
My name is Carl Hermi, I'm on the board of directors at the Highland House. We have a shed that is in pretty bad condition. The roof leaks, the sills are rotting, and we would like to tear it down and build a new shed, which will look substantially like the older shed, and that's about it. So the purpose of it is simply to destroy the old shed and build a new shed.
Do you have a site plan or anything that shows on the property where this is going to go?
I have, I have pictures of the existing shed, which some of you apparently also have. Should I pass this around?
Well, what I'm looking for is a map or something that shows us where on the property it is, whether it's going to be expanded or contracted or...
The, I don't, I don't have a site map in fact of the grid.
Oh, okay.
The existing, the existing shed is about six feet, no, 80 by 12, or 80 by 10, rather. We'd like to extend it to the, make it 8 feet by 12.
Okay. Do we know there's no issues with setbacks or coverage or anything?
There's no. It was, it's, lies pretty close to the town garage.
Okay. Sure. Have you been, I mean, have you been able to go out there and even with the two-foot addition, I mean, I don't know if it goes this way two feet or that way two feet. I mean, it looks like it's right on the...
As you're looking at the pictures, it would go forward. As you're looking at the pictures, it would, it would extend two feet towards the viewer of the pictures.
And towards the actual Highland House.
Yes?
I, I would tell you that I, because of our delay, general issuance ordinance, and because this particular property was listed in the Guilford preservation lines as historic register, I contacted them, and they looked at it, and they had no objections to revisit the existing shed. And we also contacted the Historic District Commission because this is a special permit that has something to do with historic property, and you have a memo, you have a letter there from John Cunningham, the chairman, and they have no objections.
Okay. My only concern is that it's, it's being expanded by two feet and...
They have to expand it toward the center of the property. They can't expand it this way.
Okay, so you're, you're comfortable...
I won't approve the building permit unless it's, is it any longer than the existing shed, but it could be wider.
Okay, and it won't approach into any, as long as it gets wider this way, it's not a problem towards it.
Correct.
So, so Reggie, if I understand you're right then with this tree where it is there, this, this building has got to go closer to the old town garage. Is that the only way they can do it?
No, no, it has to go the other way. It has to go closer toward the inside or the building envelope of the property.
You're going to take the tree down?
No, it's...
It's budding up against the tree on one side of the dam, has a very, very tiny impact.
Oh, I see what you're saying here.
Yeah, so are you...
I don't know. What are you going to do about that tree? That's a good question.
Well, it'll be slightly higher, and I think we might make a little accommodation in the, in one of the sillboards of the tree. I think we can cross that bridge when we come to it. But just to be clear, our wish is to make the building two feet longer as, as you're facing, as you're looking at the picture, it's two feet projecting towards the viewer of the picture. Does that make sense to you?
Right, but that was different than what we just heard, so...
But that's in, so in conflict of what you just said, I think.
You would have to seek a variance if that were, if that is exactly what the Highland House intends to do.
Why is that variance?
Because it doesn't meet the setback requirement, no.
You're approaching further into the setback?
Correct.
Wouldn't you approach towards the town garage?
No, you're saying towards the front. You're approaching into the setback.
No, they're going to put it on the backside.
That's not what he said. He just said he wants to come forward as the viewer sees this.
No, but not the buil, the, the building, the foundation of the building is, I believe, eight, eight by 10 now, and it would be, I'm sorry, the foundation of the building is, is eight by 12, and we are requesting eight, eight by 14.
Extending towards Boston Street an additional two feet.
Now, they need a variance for that. Okay, so if you're going to do that, you need to get the variance before you come here for the site. We can't hear the application until we have the variance.
Correct.
So I'm not sure we could, and frankly, I'm, I got to tell you, and I'm a little uncomfortable about approving anything right now because I can't tell what you're doing here, if you're going this way, that way, if you're, if you intend to come forward. You know, I'd sort of like to see a site plan. I'd like to see where we're going, and you're going to need to get a variance before you can do that.
Okay, if, well, if, if, if we were to, if we were to just keep the exact same dimensions then, would that be okay?
I wouldn't have a problem if it was the exact same dimensions, but if, but if it...
I think that's what we'll do then.
What about going backwards instead of forwards?
Can't go backwards because there's a, there's a privy, there's an outhouse right behind it.
And that's an historic structure.
I mean, I mean, if, what you really want to do is expand it going forward, I mean, it probably won't be a problem. You just need to follow the process, but, so if, if you're happy with just keeping the same footprint, the same height...
Well, let me check with, let me check with Jack Carls and other people on the board and see. I don't know how, because the, the carpenter's supposed to come mid-October, I think, so I don't know whether we have time to, to do that.
Well, the CBA only needs once a month.
Right.
Yep, the commission could table this application so that he can check with his people.
Why don't, why don't we do that, and we, our next meeting is the 2nd of October, so if you're going to stay on exactly the same footprint, you know, we could, we could...
Consider it a green light.
Yes, October 2nd.
Well, we could hear the application then.
We have the discretion to do that tonight if the footprint stays the same, but we're extending it two feet, which we have to have.
Well, there needs to be a variance here, and this is a special permit anyways for what's here, so the special permit needs to be approved, so...
The only reason we wanted two more feet is just, you know, a little more storage space is better than...
No, I mean, if you, if you need it, you should, just, you don't figure out what you want.
Ask for a variance.
That's right. We need to get that first before we could grant the revision to the special permit.
Okay.
Okay? So what we'll do is, why don't we table this, just in case you want to come back? In case the board is okay with just the same footprint, we'll just table it so you can come back next time, and you won't have to wait and renotice and do all that stuff. So we'll keep it open, and then you can either withdraw and go forward on October 2nd. If you need the variance, you could table it to get the variance as well, depends on how we proceed.
Yep.
Okay?
Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you. So if I can just get a motion to table this application to the 2nd. All favor it?
Aye.
Okay, the next one is Fair Street Condominiums. This is a revision to a special permit granted on June 18th, 1984, to remove Condition Number 6. I assume there's somebody from Chris Cola Engi, ah, there really are, very good.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Bob Criscollo, replacing engineer Lance there for the office of the grantor that happens tonight, Attorney General Church. And this is a parcel of land that's located between 19 and 33 Fair Street, is also known as a separate parcel, map Number 39, Lot 30. It is an R-1 zone. This is a 2 survey that I have performed. This is Fair Street right here. Parcel obviously is somewhat triangular in shape. It runs on Fair Street by 64 feet. It goes back on a diagonal line along Number 33 Fair Street, 220 feet. It borders 127 feet on the end of the town of Guilford, and it comes back to Fair Street along the subway boundary of 216, 260 by 19 Fair Street now formerly of Josh King. Parcel is about 20,036 square feet in size, almost a half acre, and the property is very, very flat, it's about elevation 19. It is mostly lawn, there's a little bit of woodland with mine here, as shown on my map. There are gardens, you can see on the property that I indicated on green, and there's a brown driveway located in the southwest corner. The application is all about an approval that was granted on June 18th, 1984, and it was an application entitled "The Foundry." And what is being requested is that Condition Number 6 that stated that, and in quotes, that Lot Number 29, and this parcel was known as Lot Number 29, be reserved for a sanitary system if necessary, as required by the town engineer. The proposal is to remove Condition Number 6, and in support of that, the existing public health code would allow for repair of the existing system of the condominium set on the opposite side of the road on the existing parcel right now. This was confirmed through the office of your town sanitarium, Dennis Johnson. We also reached out to the State Health Department, that also confirmed that that restriction could be removed and that this area did not need to be reserved as a septic repair area for the condominiums across the street, and that a repair could be done in that property in itself. And for the record, all rights to use the parcel by the adjoining, which is this parcel here, Mr. and Mrs. Duskin, would still remain, and she has rights to use the surface to plant gardens, which she already is enjoying, lawns and flowers and other things. So with that, that is the proposal. I thought that it would be appropriate to submit a letter that's Ian-written, that's dated by 2013 by her, basically approving that and acknowledging that she does have, have those rights to the surface on this property, and that she doesn't want to release, and that's what we're doing.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get that entered into the record then. We do have a letter from Dennis Johnson, Director of Health, Town of Guilford, dated September 18th regarding this application. "The applicant's proposed special permit revision does not conflict with the current public health code regarding septic system reserve areas. Should a septic system repair ever be necessary, adequate replacement area is currently available within the existing primary leaching area." Any questions from the commission? David?
I'm going to ask it of George, though I really want to ask it of Dennis Johnson, what changed in the code? You used to have to have a septic field, and you used to have a reserved septic field. And what changed?
It's my understanding that you still do, but with the technology that's available nowadays, you don't need as large a leach field, is what I was told, because I had asked the same question, and Dennis said that that's what, what the difference was, and that's why it's okay now, perhaps wasn't back then.
That's Mr. Criscollo.
If you need, yeah, more information than that, maybe Mr. Criscollo or an engineer could...
In a nutshell, that's basically it.
Okay.
That you don't need a reserve field, or that the reserve field is small enough now that...
There is enough area on the existing site because of the new technologies on the market and the code changes that allow those technologies to be constructed on the existing condominium site to do a repair of that resource system, if indeed it failed.
And who owns this site right now?
This is owned by the Fair Street Condominiums.
By the association?
That is correct.
Okay.
So that it's deeded into the association as part of the...
That is correct. Any adjoining, south, south has rights to the surface.
Deeded surface rights.
To maintain it, to have gardens, to continue...
Cantonese mint on it, or is it just a, a more...
Is it white?
Okay.
There's a restriction on the parcel.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? Any questions from the public? Sir?
Chris Wells, 33 Fair Street. When this was done, I recall there used to be a brook running in there, so it's going to be restored, now they're asking to have the necessity of having a reserve septic field, having that removed, will they replace the wetlands that they removed, so they could have that reserve field?
If I may?
Sure.
I did the survey, this was probably early summer, and the old maps did show that there was a stream there, and right now, what I found is that there's a 42-inch diameter pipe. I believe in the property that was developed to the east here was improved, there was a new drainage system put in, and it went through all the properties to the lower area down here, which is the main wetland. So I'm assuming that all that was done at that time in accordance with all the town purpose.
Okay, so the answer, I think, to your question is no, basically. Yes?
I was told that whenever we took that application in, that when that was originally approved...
I'm sorry, name it, name and address.
85 Highland Road. When we took that application in originally, when that was originally approved, it was approved for more condominiums, and then they actually ended up building, and that's why the system was as big as it was to start with. And then they didn't need that. And so that was when it configured that, to not needing this extra.
Are there any other questions from the public?
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Attorney Lynn Vilcek, over from Saturday, I'm asking, and record that you were a district manager who lives at 19 Fair Street, rip, oh, sorry, yeah, Fair Street. She, she has, you have a letter written by her, but she's unable to attend today. She has no objection. Once again, she has the surface easement rights to the property in perpetuity, and she's happy to go along with this application.
Thank you very much. Any, any other questions from the public? Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody wishing to speak against the application? Are any comments from anybody, or any questions?
Will this be a building lot, an eligible non-conforming building lot? What will this be? Or what could this be, assuming one acquires or extinguishes the surface rights?
Well, I mean, I think it could be, I think that's permitted to be under the code in that zone.
I'm asking George, is this a building lot?
I think it's an R1 zone.
Yep.
So it meets the minimum lot size standards for an R1 zone.
It doesn't have the frontage, I think.
I'm not sure how much frontage.
No, I just looked, and it said 80 feet of frontage, and I thought Tesla is 60, so does that make it essentially eligible non-conforming?
The minimum lot size for an interior lot in the R1 zone...
It has, it has frontage, it just doesn't have 80 feet of frontage.
Right, which would mean that it's an interior lot. So it might be, it might, I hadn't really thought about it, but it might be a legal interior lot. So my guess is that, notwithstanding any questions about the surface rights and ownership issues, it could be a building lot, yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, hearing none, I will close the public hearing on this matter, and we will move on to Donald Ashford. This is a CAM site plan approval for replacement of an existing deck and stairway within 100 feet of a critical coastal resource.
I'm the director of the Guilford County, coming to your 18th and 11th, and representing Donald Ashford. We're supposed to replace a deck, same size, same dimensions, and just take away and protect it, and therefore, it's too bad, and then sometimes spoil it.
And on this map, whereabouts, is it this deck over here that's...
Yeah.
Okay, right there. So you're going to rebuild this wall? Right, the code is here, so you're going to, oh, okay, so you're going to just rebuild basically what was there?
Yeah, a whole little bit of that.
All right. We do have a letter in the file from Kevin McGee, dated September 17th, the town environmental planner, regarding the application. "This application is for the construction of a 10-by-14 deck damaged by storm Sandy. Work is shown to be constructed adjacent to a rocky shorefront and in a FEMA flood zone. This work has, has a low potential to cause siltation to the waters of Long Island Sound. In order to mitigate any impacts to the coastal resource, the applicant should remove any debris to an upland disposal location at the end of each workday, and you don't have a problem with doing that." In addition, we have a letter from John Goucher, from the Office of Long Island Sound Program of State of Connecticut. "We review the above referenced proposal for consistency with Connecticut Coastal Management Act policies and have no comments from the Planning and Zoning Commission's consideration." Are there any questions that the commissioners have? Any questions from the public? Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody wishing to speak against? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask one more time, questions from anyone here? Okay, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Why don't I just send this back down to the secretary? Okay, you're all set for now, we'll vote on it later, we're just going to go through all of these first. The next application is Robert Opel. This is property located at 379 Old Whitfield Street. "A special permit to allow an accessory apartment in an accessory structure less than 10 years old." And I believe you did receive a variance on this already.
Yes, we did.
Very good, okay.
My name is Robert Opel, and I represent the Department of Two Terrace. On August 20th, we did receive a setback variance, and we're here tonight because this would be a new accessory structure, less than 10 years old.
Okay, and on the site plan, that is the proposed building right here.
That's true.
And what's, what's this outline then?
That's the existing.
Okay, so you're going to take that down?
Yes.
And you're actually going to move it away from the side line?
We're trying to move on, but we have septic tank, this septic leaching field.
Gotcha. All right, questions from the commission?
Other than the setback improvement, what, how is this structure better for you than the old structure?
The old structure is beautiful, so we don't have a stream around, and so it can't really be moved, and it's, so we're trying to build it.
And the septic, the, moving the building more towards the center doesn't cause a septic problem?
No.
Looks like your leaching fields are down there, right? So you're, and the reserve area is past it, if you needed it?
Yes, and the reserve over there.
Okay, so you won't be moving on top of it.
What we're going to do is, because there are 10 feet, we're going to do a slab-on grade.
Okay.
Which then is approved when we did a test investigation.
What's the building being used for?
Accessory apartment.
Okay, any, any other questions from the commission?
Is it going to be taller than it was then?
It has to be 15 feet or under the bridge.
Is it starting at half?
Less than 15 feet.
Start again. It's going to be taller.
It probably will be taller.
Okay.
I don't, I can't really what the existence is.
Okay.
We have, we have... We have, we have, because it's older and we can't get any more than 15 feet.
That's an accessory structure.
But it will, whenever your buildings will be taller, they'll be taller than this.
Are there any other questions? Questions from the public? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Yes, my name is William Matt. I live at 382 Woodfield, directly off across the street from this property. And we have no objection to the application. We don't know of any other objections by any other neighbors. And this particular property owner has been property longer, I think, than anyone else on our street. It's with the possible exception of Doris Handy, my neighbor, who's been there for over half a century. These people have owned two or three different plots on the street, including this one. And they are very good neighbors and they have the best interest of our neighborhood at heart so that I hope the commission will look favorably on their application.
Thank you for your input. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak against the application? Any questions or other comments?
I have one more question.
Sir?
How big is your driveway? How many cars can you drive it?
We have two cuts. Sorry, we have one right here and then we have the right one.
Okay. So off-street parking, how many spaces are there?
Uh, there's some out where you probably.
How many, how many do we need?
Three.
I'm sure you can get to work there.
Yeah.
Probably get three on one side and one on the other.
Yeah, if you're being technical about it, you'd go five.
You could go all the way up alongside that house on the left side.
Okay, any other questions? Going once, going twice. Okay, hearing none, I will close the hearing on this application and we'll move on to Algonquin Industries. This is property located at 129 Soundview Road. This is a CAM site plan approval for the replacement of an existing nitrogen tank. Please.
For the record, I'm Mark Young. I'm the land's rear of the Waldo Associates representing Algonquin Industries on this application. This application is for the replacement of existing liquid nitrogen tank to the rear of the building. On this map is at 122 feet. Some of you live in out here. We're about, well, let's report about south of Boston Street. This building, I couldn't fit all the building on this map, but this building is shown here. Parking lot is in here. Parkside is right out here. And the nearest coastal resource is the salt marsh out in the back. The building was built long before anybody thought much about salt marsh, so it is, it is pretty close back here. This application is strictly related to the nitrogen tank here. There's an existing tank on a concrete slab which is about 12 by 28 feet. That'll be removed. A larger slab of about 20 by 3 to 6 feet will be constructed and a larger tank will be installed right there. Our erosion control is primarily silt fence right along the top of the bank here. That will protect the wetland from any siltation from a construction procedure. Kevin McGee has made a couple of suggestions that we have incorporated the latest revision of the plan. Specifically, one, any excavated material will be bailed directly to a truck, so there will be no stockpiles. Two, the zoning enforcement officer will be notified once the silt fence is in place before construction proceeds. And three, let's see, oh, any concrete washwater will be directed into a container, so you're not going to get that concrete water washing into the, into the wetland. We've discussed it with the fire marshal. There's a, there's a gravel path going around the building here for fire trucks. We're going to maintain that. We'll have to move it over a little bit, but we'll maintain the path there with room for the fire truck access. The, the, the nitrogen tank that's used in the manufacturing process at Algonquin Industries, Greg Jankura from Algonquin is here to discuss how they use the nitrogen.
Mark, can you tell us about stormwater?
Okay, the stormwater which is, we're treating the stormwater which falls on the new concrete. We've designed an infiltration trench which surrounds the, the new slab, which is basically just like a one-foot by two-foot trench filled with crust down to water. It'll run off the slab in, into this trench and soak into the ground. It's great sandy soil, so it'll, it'll all, pretty much all be infiltrated right there.
Thank you. Sir?
Okay, I'm Greg Jankura. I work for Algonquin Industries, plant engineer there. Algonquin's owned by a larger company, Red Magnum Wire, based in Torquay. There's six North American plants. The Guilford plant, we have 90 employees, 63 manufacturing jobs in there. We started in 1968 on Soundview Road. We primarily manufacture copper and aluminum wire, mostly for the power distribution, the transformer industry, and the motor winding market. Nitrogen, we use the nitrogen to do batch annealing of the copper. All the, most of the copper that runs through the plant is batch annealed there. There's three, three ovens there that anneal it.
What does batch annealing mean?
They'll put 12,000 pounds of copper, that's flattened copper.
Okay.
They put a container over it. They pump the nitrogen into the container to displace the oxygen. If you didn't do this, the copper would turn purple and then they put a furnace on top of it, container, you know, or it's a.
And what do you produce?
It's copper wire.
That's why.
Shape, shape wire. Transformer, mostly for the transformer and order industry.
Right, right. The annealing makes it flexible enough so you can work with it.
The annealing, you know, when you bend the copper that's not annealed, it'll spring back and with the anneal, you'll bend it and it'll stay formed.
What's the term you mean?
Anneal. A-N-N-E-A.
Anneal?
Anneal.
Okay. And how big is the tank right now?
Right now, 7,500 gallons.
Seventy-five hundred, okay, so for?
The new tank.
What's the percentage increase there?
The tank that's there is a, was built in 1968. New tank, it's 11,000.
Yeah, okay.
Currently, there's approximately four loads a week filling it. With the new tank, it should get 1200 loads a week.
And what's to the, what's to the north, beside the flatlands and residential? Is this all?
This is all industrial.
146 is the next.
Steel, low-bake property.
This is a medical, medical property, a medical device company?
That's right.
It's all industrial?
It's all industrial.
Residential, no?
Residential's across the street, industrial, on the east side of the street.
And so your distance to Cradles to Crayons is?
Outside of the blocks.
Outside of the blocks.
Couple hundred yards, at least a couple, at least. There's two buildings in between, then Cradles on the corner.
Yeah.
All right, speaking of coastal areas, we have a letter from John Goucher. We have reviewed the above referenced proposal for consistency with the Connecticut Coastal Management Act policies and have no comments for the Planning and Zoning Commission's consideration. In addition, we have a letter from Mark Damiani, who is the Assistant Town Engineer, Public Works Director. The proposed tank installation has been reviewed as to FEMA and town stormwater requirements and is found to be sufficiently anchored to prevent the tank from flotation. Stormwater requirements are addressed in accordance with the regulations. Finally, we have a letter from Kevin McGee, the Environmental Planner. Algonquin Industries is proposing to remove their existing nitrogen tank and concrete pad and install a larger pad, I guess, in an 11,000 gallon nitrogen tank at the same location and shift the access driveway approximately six feet towards tidal wetlands. The applicant has completed the checklist to guide low-impact development best management practices. Stormwater from the concrete pad is shown to be treated by stone infiltration trenches. The proposed work is located in a FEMA AE flood zone, which means it is subject to stillwater flooding. The mitigation measures noted in the coastal area management application and site plan provide for erosion and sedimentation control measures that are designed to minimize impacts to the adjacent coastal resources. In order to make sure that the coastal resources are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. Number one, the town of Guilford Zone Enforcement Officer should be notified to inspect the sedimentation and role control measures prior to site work. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Number two, all material being dug out should be placed into a truck and removed from site. No soil stockpile should be constructed on site. And number three, the concrete rinse water should be captured in a container and disposed of off-site. And you're aware of all those conditions and I think they are on the?
Mr. Chair of the Coastal.
Yes.
You've actually added to this map.
Great.
Could you actually do that?
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Kirk Harrow from Airgas, the nitrogen supplier, is here. He's got a couple of comments about the tank itself that I might like to.
My apologies for not getting to you sooner. Please, sir, go ahead.
My name is Kirk Harrow. I'm the director of bulk sales for Airgas Northeast and we're the supplier of liquid nitrogen as well as the manufacturer. The manufacturer, the liquid nitrogen, or what we call LIN, in Bosworth, Connecticut, in an interseparation unit. What that unit does is take air and filter it and through a series of compression and expansion, manufacture liquid nitrogen, liquid argon, and liquid oxygen. We then store those chemicals and tanks on-site at our facility and then ship those products in over-the-road full-size cryogenic transports to customers like Algonquin. The reason they use liquid nitrogen is that one unit of liquid expands 800 times to a gas. It's the most efficient way to use nitrogen. For example, one cylinder that you might see, a standard industrial cylinder holds 300 cubic feet. That tank holds 1.2 million cubic feet. So it's an economy of scale thing that allows the processor to manufacture at the most cost competitive way. So we manufacture the nitrogen. We purchase the tank from a company called Chart Industries. Our technicians install the tank and then maintain it. We have a 24/7 emergency preventative maintenance plan as well as an annual PM plan that are filed each year. So our technicians will install this tank over the course of about half a day. We'll bring in the new tank on a transport, crane it off, cart off the old tank to a rehab yard, and then do the interconnected piping between the tank and the vaporization system. So our crews will be out of there, you know, within six to eight hours. We'll fill the tank and then hand it over to Algonquin. Our, our installations are governed primarily by NFPA and CGA. The CGA is the Compressed Gas Association, so all of our installations are governed by that. We're an ISO 1000 company and of course we follow very safe protocols because we take, you know, the handling and distribution of industrial gases very seriously.
Okay, questions?
Can you describe the, can you make a comparison for us of the valves and other safety features that exist on this 1968 tank compared to this, the one that is being installed?
The tank itself is essentially a vacuum bottle. It's got an inner vessel and an outer vessel. There's a vacuum hold in between to provide the best insulation properties. The, the old tank, the vacuum's failed. There's a vacuum pump on it, so that doesn't even work correctly. The valves have all been upgraded with larger diameter valves and, you know, more stainless steel. And some of the older systems have more copper and brass and bronze, which is more problematic in terms of maintenance long-term. The, the safety issues with the tank are it's, it's a cryogenic liquid, which means it's stored at minus 320 when we vaporize it, running through a series of finned extruded tubes, essentially, turned into a gas. So it's minus 320, which means it wants to return to its normal state, which is gas. So it pressurizes itself. So the tank has a series of redundant safeties so that if for some reason there was an overpressurization, that the safeties would lift. There's dual safeties. There's two spring-loaded safeties and two burst disc safeties. So if one were to go, you could turn a handle so the entire contents of the tank would evacuate. And by having those two pressure relief devices, you ensure the tank doesn't rupture or explode.
And that handle is on the tank, on the tank? And are there any remote options for that kind of, for dealing with that kind of problem?
When you're talking about burst or explosion, are you talking about just the fact it is under pressure or is it the material itself has combustible?
No, absolutely not. Nitrogen's inert. Air is 79% nitrogen, so we breathe nitrogen every day. It's just under pressure. And there's relief valves in the tank. There's also relief valves on the vaporization system. And then there's a final line regulation system which will regulate that down to the use pressure of probably 4 PSI, something like that.
Do you currently maintain the tank, see this like now? Have there been any problems with it recently?
Other than the vacuum is not functional today? No. Our drivers will inspect the tank every time they deliver. So every time we send a driver, they're trained to look for leaks and issues. And then the annual PM will pick up, get some more detailed maintenance program.
And the pressurization is really the safety concern, not so much an explosion per se as the release of the pressure?
Nitrogen is inert. The hazards, the two hazards with nitrogen are that it displaces oxygen, so if you find space, there's this as a radiation hazard. That's why the tank's outside. The other hazard is it's minus 320 degrees up, so it's a cryogenic fluid. So if there's any leaks there, you don't want anybody to touch the valves or the handles, which is why there's a fence around the system so that nobody can approach it. Really we don't want anybody from Algonquin to really touch the equipment, monitor it, and do it.
But if it were suddenly to approach something closer to an outdoor temperature, then it would expand massively and destroyed the vacuum as well as the rest of the system.
Well, no, it couldn't because of the safeties.
Oh, you have the valves and then you have the burst disc which would rupture before the tank ruptured and release the nitrogen.
Right, the first, the first safety is a spring-loaded safety. The second is a burst disc. So the first one will recede after, you know, a period of time after the gas has vented off. The burst disc is the next line. That actually is the stored disc that will, you know.
Under certain pressure, it gets a burst, it breaking point pops?
Yeah, it's at 1.5 MWAP at the system.
And then the next just disperses into the atmosphere and doesn't, it's not going to pollute wetlands and it's not going to float down?
No, it's, it's a gas, right. So it'll, it'll just vent off and there could be a cloud, you know, of some sort. Again, the system is designed so that that doesn't happen. Sometimes we will have, you know, some venting, some hissing for not using it, for example. But the system is intrinsically silent and intelligent. We, we have over, you know, 1,000 of these installations, we have all these. This may not be a fair question to you, but Mr. Damiani, talked about the tank being anchored to prevent flotation. Did anyone talk about what that is? How do you, is that why? What we do is we, once we, once we install the tank, we use a hilted tool and drill into the concrete and then we epoxy the proper fasteners to keep the tank attached to the concrete. The point is that flood, that tank doesn't go flooding out of the river. Right. So it's strapped in or it's bolted in the bolt pad? Bolted in the pad.
Okay, any other questions? Is there any questions from the public? Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Anybody wishing to speak against? Okay, one last opportunity for questions. Okay, hearing none, I will close the public hearing on this matter. What I would like to do at this point is to vote on the applications that we've already considered and then we'll go on to do the one-site plan and then we'll come back and do the amendments. So if I could please get a motion on the Fair Street Condominiums.
I read it. Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve an amendment to the special permit for the Foundry, 38 Fair Street by deleting from the June 18, 1984 letter of approval, condition six, that lot 29 be reserved for the sanitary system if necessary, as required by. required by town engineer. This amendment is approved based upon a finding that the septic sanitary system reserve is no longer necessary, as advised by the Director of Health. This amendment is effective on September 27, 2013, and upon filing with the town clerk.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Well, we've had testimony from the subject matter experts that it's no longer required with the new technology, and therefore does not need to be a condition anymore, that the existing lot can handle the sewage. There is a reserve area there, and apparently as well, this number of units built was not what was originally planned, so perhaps the capacity isn't what it once was thought that would be required. So I'm in favor of it. Any other discussion?
I agree with the chairman on all those points.
Okay. Why don't we call for a vote then? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that one is passed. If I can get a motion, please, on the Ashford application.
Voted, I'll make the motion, voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve coastal site plan application for Donald Ashford at 118 Daniel Avenue, MAP 10, Lot 159, as shown on application, and plans dated July 10, 2013. This application approved with the following condition, that applicant remove any debris to upland disposable location at the end of each day. The application is approved based upon the finding that it conforms with the zoning code and is consistent with coastal management policy of the state of Connecticut.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. All right, just a replacement of an existing deck, no change in the footprint or anything else from what we've been told this evening and what's on file. In addition, the applicant has agreed to remove any building debris from the construction of this to an upland location at the end of each day, as was requested by the town environmental planner. So with those conditions, with that condition, I'm in favor of it. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that one is completed. If I can get a motion, please, for the Opal application?
Okay, I'll hear. Opposed motion, voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a special permit application for an accessory apartment for Robert Opal at 379 Overwood Hill Street, MAP 28, Lot 21, as shown on an application, and plans dated August 8, 2013. This application is approved with the following conditions. This application is approved based on the finding that with the variance granted, it conforms with the zoning code. Special permit is effective on September 27, 2013, and upon filing with the town clerk.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Well, there's one condition that Kevin McGee mentions. Actually--
That's the other one, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So I had a question. Is this, is this accessory apartment supposed to have, you know, is the reason, it says 10 years for detached accessory.
Yes.
So we're sort of waiving that?
Well, no, he got a variance.
They got a variance.
We can't waive it, yeah. We can't waive it, but because he did go to the zoning board of appeals, they have the authority to grant a waiver for legal hardship, so they apparently found legal hardship and granted variance, so having that before us, he's in conformance with the zoning regulations. Any, any discussion? It seems relatively straightforward. He is moving it back away from setback area, so he's improving separation from his neighbor. I'm basically okay with the application. So I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, we will move on to the Algonquin Industries application. If I could please get a motion.
Yeah, I'll do that one. The voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a site plan and coastal site plan application at, bless you, at 129 Soundview Road, MAP 41, Lot 1, as shown on an application dated July 15, 2013, and quote, "site plan, Algonquin Industries", end quote, dated July 12, 2013, revised to August 2, 2013, prepared by Waldo and Associates, LLC. This application is approved with the following conditions, and we all agree that these are the three, these are the same. The town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer should be notified to inspect the sedimentation control measures prior to sitework. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Number two, all material being dug out should be placed into a truck and removed from the site.
It's going to have to be a truck.
Is this an appropriate structure for a condition?
Yeah, there's probably going to be some expedition.
Okay.
I mean, the concrete's going to be taken up, and there may be some digging to, you know--
And if it isn't a truck, are we going to come back and find them?
Well, it can be anything they want to put it on, as long as it gets taken off-site, suitable container.
No soil stockpiles should be constructed on-site. Number three, the concrete rinse water should be captured in a container and be disposed of off-site. This application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with the zoning code and is consistent with the coastal management policies of the state of Connecticut.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I gather there's a more recent revision date than August 2.
Yes. Why would you-- Does this take September 18? It's coming right here.
I amend to revise to August 2 and revised again August 18, 2013.
Could we resecond that?
September--
September--
Sorry. Revised to August 2 and revised again September 13.
And also--
Reschedule--
September 18.
Oh.
18.
18.
Let me just try this one more time. Just start over. Revised to August 2, 2013, revised again September 18, 2013.
And you've-- I agree with the second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I think it's a good plan. I think one of the things I heard is that it's actually, if I understand correctly, it's going to somewhat reduce the traffic, the truck traffic down to the site. I think it'll make the, I think it'll make it more efficient for the, for the company, and I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Is there anything else that anyone would like to say?
It's, it's far enough away from everything for you not to be concerned about the, the risks associated with a cloud or with the burns from extreme cold and other issues.
Okay. All right, I'll call for a vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, it's passed. All right, what I'd like to do at this point is just go to Anthony DeLuca. It's a property located at 2692 Boxer Post Road. This is a site plan revision to utilize an existing structure by the property owner. It's a fruit and produce stand. We'd like to receive and take action, so I'd get a motion to receive.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is there someone here to--
I don't see him here, Mr. Chairman, so I suggest we move on.
Okay.
What's that?
I don't know.
All right, well, we'll pick that up then later. Why don't we open the public hearing at this point on amending section 273-2, word usage definitions specifically, where definitions included in Table 5 of the zoning code.
You don't want to do C first?
C?
There's a C on my agenda. It says coastal area--
Save.
Well, that's just to receive and set up, so I was going to pick that up later. So why don't we start with this, and then we will, well, I'll tell you what, since they're both interrelated, right, why don't we open them both, and also, and then Table 5 permitted uses in non-residential districts, why don't you cover, George, the definitions in Donette, and then after that, do the permitted uses, and we'll ask questions on both of those, and we'll ask for the fours and against on both of those. So are you presenting, George, or Donette?
No, Donette.
Donette, please.
Okay. Donette Stockton, 85 Tyro, Grove, chair, co-chair of the Table 5 Subcommittee. That was part of Planning and Zoning Committee from Planning. Steve Cox also co-chaired with me, and Tony Fabiano was on the, Tony Fabiano and Marlon McGlove also were on the committee, as well as David Brink. There he is. All right. Little bit of background on that. Back in around 2001, the planning and zoning implemented new zones, and those, the, when they put in those new zones, they pretty much ignored some of the existing ones, the older existing ones. So we, they just left hanging with archaic language and, and uses and that totally didn't fit anymore. So we sat down and went through, first we started with the, the language of the uses themselves. We had a very well-rounded group that could look at it from all different angles, and we went through the uses, and then we went through them by zone, and then we went through them line by line, all the way across, to see if they made sense, looking at the whole picture. We went out and did field studies of the zones to see what was already there in those zones and what could work better. I think we went into the idea, and with the idea that we needed more industrial zones because we don't have any industry. We have very little industry, and it turns out we have a ton of industrial zones and nothing on them. They're all woods. So something's wrong with that picture. It's obviously not, uses aren't matching up with the, with the zone. I, I would like to go through this one by one and, and give the reasoning behind, behind the changes that we made, and we can talk about them each, the commission will, you know--
Let me just ask, with regard to the definitions, is there anything there that you should cover specifically?
Just one thing I want to point out, in the, where it says Table 5 definitions, you see the fourth line down, or the fourth element down is adult-oriented facilities. That should be scratched from your list because we have a, what we think is a better definition on this other page, so that should be, that should substitute for that line.
Okay, so that'll be deleted, and in its place, we will--
One, two.
--substitute from the other page there.
Okay.
Okay. Where are you? Yeah? Your sheet that you're reading on, double-digit C4 is-- We are not addressing C4 or CD. The reason being, C4 is important, CD, we have moved to, we would like, the, one of the determinations that Table 5 came up with was that we would like to see the CDs be, because they're so random, there are four different CD zones, and we would like to see them absorbed into other areas around them, and those, that CD zone entirely go away.
We'll, we'll get to the questions later, but why don't you please complete your presentation, and we'll, we'll get to questions from everyone.
Okay. All right. First, building uses in facilities of the town and state, state and federal governments. That, the terminology stayed the same, and we allowed it straight across the border because of the fact we really can't tell any of them no anyway, and it's the fact that we thought we could was, you know, we can't. So we just wanted to make it--
You can't tell the town no either?
Theoretically.
Theoretically. Well, I think there have been situations where they tried, but it didn't work, but it hasn't happened in time recently.
The state and federal government--
State and federal-- It's now, you can't be waiting for that.
Well, you also see that on, on the current regulations, these facilities are allowed in all the commercial zones except for shopping center, and then MUOS and C4W. There didn't really seem to be any logic for why you wouldn't want to allow them in shopping center, MUOS, or C4W, so we added them. So now they're allowed in all commercial zones.
Um, two, maybe two. Yeah?
I just want to check. So are we saying that without this change right now, that if the police department wanted to put a remote office, it's a lot of city, some towns do now, they put a little office in the shopping center, under the old regs, they wouldn't, we can tell them they can't do it? Under these regs, we can't tell them they can't do it?
We'd end up--
We'd, they'd be permitted use under this proposal.
Okay.
Something to say.
Donette, administrative question. Do you have any more of the definition sheets? We're short a couple back here.
The definitions, as we just throughed all the recs, it became clear that some things are needed a little better clarity in the, in the recs than in the two, and so we added, that's when we decided go ahead and tackle the additional definitions. Okay, two, retail clothes cleaning and laundry establishments, including pressing and cleaning with non-flammable liquids. We changed that to retail dry cleaning and laundry establishments. As speaking with local dry cleaners and researching, it was the non-flammable liquids aspect is not necessary anymore. It's outdated. They don't use flammable liquids any longer.
Is there a C2 zone?
That's the Yale Medical Facility.
Yes.
That's the only place for that.
And that's why we decided--
Yes.
Right. We would not have cleaners in Yale Medical. That's, that's the only change in that one, is that we didn't think Yale would want to have a laundry mat, okay, and a dry cleaner.
Which is separate and distinct. No, it is not. Part of all laundry facilities, okay?
And, I mean, if Yale wanted to use it as an accessory use, they'd be able to use it as an accessory use, but to do it separately, I mean, accessory uses are allowed as, as a right.
I apologize, I wasn't looking. We are distinguishing between retail dry cleaning and laundry--
Launder mats.
Washing machines, which we currently have in Guilford.
Right. So that is, that would be the next one on the list. We did add laundromats, as we did not allow them, I mean, we've been, they have been only allowed in the C2, and--
And by allowing them on the PB, PB2, TS, TS2, essentially what we're saying is that you belong, if they belong anywhere, they ought to be on the post roads.
Yes, and that, and that's dictated by the septic capacity.
Well, the fact that they're probably aren't any and may not be any because of separate--
It's because of--
If they belong anywhere, they belong--
That's where they go. All right.
And we substituted the word laundromats for self-service clothes cleaning establishments because--
It makes more sense.
--that description of what does actually, what it actually is, rather than some jargon.
Any questions on those so far? Okay. Clinics, medical, and dental. We added the shopping center zone because it's become uncommon used in shopping centers around the country, and didn't see any reason, any, that that would cause a conflict, so we added it to that. Other than that, it stayed the same.
The, the way this, the way the chart reads, it's a little bit confusing. It almost looks like TS2 currently doesn't allow that. That's not correct. It's, that's actually under the SC.
It's the SC zone, right. I made the mistake--
Right, what?
--of making this chart in Word instead of Excel, and so that's the reason that the columns do not line up as well as they should.
Under the current regulations, clinics, medical, dental are not allowed in the SC zone.
Which is--
Which we didn't like, made much sense, so we, the suggestion is to make them, to allow them in that zone.
That means if, if the Big Y Plaza decided they wanted to open a, you know, a walk-in little clinic or a small dentist office or whatever in there, they would be able to do it without it being a problem, so.
And a clinic is defined as a healthcare facility providing medical or dental services to outpatients, meaning--
Right. No hospital overnight.
Not an overnight kind of thing. If I have to go get my blood drawn somewhere, that presumably is included in that, we can--
That would be able to be in there, yeah.
And dentist's office is presumably included in that.
Yeah.
But not my overnight--
But not--
--emergency room in a helicopter--
Like it, yeah, right.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, any emergency facility, I mean, basically, could be, like Middlesex, for instance, okay? They don't really have overnight facilities there. You just come in, you have an accident, I mean, that would also be included.
I think it falls under the nice one.
You would still, you could still be there overnight though. If they don't close.
I don't think, but they don't have beds yet.
Well, Yale--
Well, Yale, they don't have.
No, I'm talking about like.
At the, at the good one.
Yeah, Essex Clinic. They just walk in, broken arm, and go hold it at half the middle of the evening.
Or to the hospital.
Okay, number five, convalescent homes, hospitals. We expanded that, um, we spoke of the nursing homes, got a little bit more modern terminology with skilled nursing facilities. Hospitals and urgent medical care facilities as in the Yale Whos Lane facility. Uh, we expanded that to be allowed in the I1 and I2 zones. And that's the only real difference, only change. We updated the, the C number.
We added storage.
We added number six, yes, self-storage facilities, as we did not have that as an allowable, you know, use on this chart. And we put it in I1 and I2 and TS2 and TS and then the SCW for the rock pile.
I had a quick question back on the four skilled nursing facilities. I mean, um, are you, for using the word skilled, is it limiting it to, you know, what, what did you define skilled nursing?
A skilled nursing facility is, that's the terminology and the licensing terminology for places like Apple Rehab or Guilford, um, what is the name of the one out?
Guilford House.
Guilford House, yes.
And skilled means that it's either RN or LPN, I guess. In other words, you couldn't just be, um, kind of an assistant, you know, whatever they call it.
Like a, you know, like your woman.
That would be a degree or associate degree, I imagine.
It's just their licensing terminology that they use. So that's what they have their licenses read nowadays, instead of nursing home, this is the.
You wouldn't want to go to an unskilled person.
Well, that's, that's.
It's sort of, maybe that's like the old, like the old, like old, what used to be called old folks home or something like that.
Where they just dump you off and you stay there until you die.
Whatever it is.
There's no, there's no service at all.
Well, they do have a lot of, you know, assistant living where actually the person that may be helping may not be, uh, basically.
Not, that's not healthcare, right.
It allows a higher fee to be charged because you're skilled, just like a barber or a hairdresser.
Same care section.
Same thing.
So they would be charged differently.
Assisted living wouldn't necessarily be medical care, you'd, it'd be personal.
Okay, anything under six?
We didn't have a, the, what are sometimes called mini, mini storage or personal storage facilities, of which we have several in Guilford. They were permitted previously as, under the category warehouses. Now we have a new category called self-storage facilities, uh, which is, I guess, more appropriate to what these things are actually called in the, in the real estate world. And we also expanded the zones in which they could be located. So, not only industrial, but also in the TS zones and also in the SCW zone.
Now, would any of the existing, uh, facilities that are self-stored now be, uh?
No, they're, they're, they're in industrial zones, so.
They're in industrial zones now, so they're, they're not going to give that a charge.
They're not going to come knocking for me.
We worked really hard to make sure we didn't make any, not go forwardies.
There are already, so there are already storage facilities in what?
In the industrial zone?
That's the only place.
In these zones.
SCW that I know of.
What?
SCW, there's storage.
SCW is the rock pile.
Where is it?
Is there self-storage on top of the rock pile?
There was before.
There was.
It's not there anymore.
It's gone.
Okay.
It's just rock up there now.
It's just a rock.
And it would be actually a good spot for it because they don't need septic.
I think that was, the front part of the property there was industrial, isn't it? Maybe that's why the self-storage got there in the first place.
And some down at the end of Woodfield Street.
They, they put in an engineering septic system for the rock pile. I mean, they've got all kinds of capacity over by where you come along 57, that whole area is letrile, so.
Is that ever going to be developed?
Well, that's neither here nor there, we could debate that all night, so why don't we move on?
Ryan's, Ryan's working on it.
With the number five, just, uh, we have a special permit, special permit.
That's number MUOS?
No, number six is.
Self-storage facilities, number five.
I think the, the motivation was, self-storage facilities oftentimes are literally a way to, well figuratively a way to warehouse land. Meaning you haven't developed it yet, but you want to make some money off of it and so you throw up some cheap self-storage units. But, you know, the TS and TS2 is along the post road and there are, there's self-storage which is one level and small. And there's a relatively large facility on Bramford, it is three or four stories. And so the notion was we ought to have special permit where it's going on the post road just to find out, you know, just what kind of intensity are they talking about?
Ladies and gentlemen.
Is it modest or is it going to be several stories? And that's why along the post road, we thought we ought to have a special permit.
And we could, that would hopefully enhance the quality of the design and landscaping, that sort of thing can be associated with it as opposed to in an industrial zone. That might have its own point.
So the special permit allows us to stick with the design.
Well, time review happens on any application that is non-residential or has multiple, multi-housing situations.
Including self-storage.
Yes.
Any place a little site length requirement.
It's just, as of right, now that, and that's one of the reasons that we were trying to get rid of CD because CD predated design review committee and made sure you got design review. And it no longer is necessary to have that stipulation since it happens every time you have a commercial or non-residential use. Uh, okay, number seven, um, which has become dwelling units and we increased, we allowed, um, the only change being we allowed dwelling units in the shopping center zone and, and at the rock pile. Now, obviously, that's going to be based on their septic capacity.
So this is a, I'm sorry.
If we were to allow this in a shopping, in the shopping center zone, we try to look at that shopping center zone, the Big Y Shopping Center as, if this, if this was to close, uh, a new owner come in and buy this and they wanted to totally revamp, what would we want to be able to have, allowed to go in there, you know? And housing over businesses is a desirable, a desirable feature. It makes for a safer environment when people are there 24/7. So that's why.
This is a substantive, this is substantive change.
But this listed as being there under the old regs as well, under SC.
Shopping center, SC and SCW does not permit housing now.
Oh, so this shifts over.
Yeah, the skewing is off here again, sorry about that. But this, under, under current regulations, for the shopping center zone, which is Walmart, Big Y, and the SCW, which is the rock pile, residential use is not permitted.
This is, this is a slight shift off the original mandate of how do we reconcile and make sense because here we are proactively saying, God, you might be nice to them, apartment over Big Y.
Well, this, this is based on, if it's okay to, if it's okay to have apartments or residential uses in the other commercial zones, why isn't it okay to have it in the shopping center zone and the shop, and the SCW zone? The, notwithstanding, I mean, as Donette said, envision the shopping center zone as if there was nothing there now, it was vacant. Would it, why would that, why would it be treated any differently in that respect than other TS or PB zones or whatever?
It's like, as we just said, you know, look at the Big Y now, it looks like there are apartments up there.
You said it.
We went, we designed it so it would look more multi-use and, and trendy, like we are all going.
This was, this was, this was a topic of discussion yesterday at town, at the Ruwan West Committee meeting. The, it's, it's important to understand, to realize that there's no requirement that this residential use be mixed with commercial use. It's to be a hundred percent residential use. Uh, so, uh, but I think part of the logic initially for allowing this fairly high-density residential use in these commercial zones was the idea of encouraging mixed use, even though there's no absolute requirement in any of them that there be a mixed use.
That's a good point. Because I always think of it as mixed use automatically because it's in a commercial zone.
All of the ones we have so far have been mixed use, including the ones under construction right now on the west side. They're both, they're, we have apartments in commercial use as part of this, the same site development. But there's no requirement that it be that way.
Now, the number of use, use of the units that we are allowing, you know, we've had, my, my first question to George when we tackled, when I started with this was, why don't we let the septic capacity dictate how many units can be on bars? And he said that it didn't provide stability for the neighborhoods to know what was capable of going in there from the get-go. And like you wouldn't want to have somebody suddenly throw up a monstrous, you know, apartment complex in an area where it just didn't really fit. Just because they had sandy soil and go for it, you know?
Well, that raises a whole, that, that implies not just to this zone, but to every zone.
Every zone.
Including residential zones.
Yes.
Why not, why do we have arbitrary standard that says you have to have the two-acre lot or four-acre lot or one-acre lot? Why not just let people build whatever density they can by septic? Uh, but there's obviously more to the density regulation than just sewage disposal.
Obviously.
These numbers are somewhat arbitrary. They're, except when you're thinking of a very small site, they're way over what any development can realistically achieve with sewage, with onsite sewage disposal. But there are questions about it.
But line number seven, if I understood one of the things you just said, we're not talking about a mixed use, we're talking about a primary use.
Could be either, could be either one.
Either way.
All of the places in, in commercial zones now where we have apartments, they are in fact mixed with commercial use.
Because they're accessory apartments to the commercial use or?
No, because they're, this part of the site development plan. The two that come, that come to mind, I'll point to, are the, the one that's on the Guilford Tavern site that's under construction right now.
What is that?
It's, pardon me?
Do you know, do you know?
It's TS2. There's where the Guilford Tavern restaurant used to be, there's, that's being renovated into retail space and I think office. And then attached to that in the rear are six or eight townhouse units. Across the street, there's actually two properties, there's in the same, same ownership. One is actually a freestanding apartment development, basically. There's 20 apartments there. And then immediately next to it on the west side, under construction right now, are 12 new apartments. And also on that same site, there's a, the plan includes the development of, uh, uh, commercial space. I can't remember the exact size of it, but.
Yeah, it's two commercial buildings up front and then in the rares apartments, apartment building.
Twelve apartments.
The current commercial building there is Take the Cake Gun Site, Guilford, Tennessee.
That's on the next site. That gets further towards Bramford, the site right next to, down the road towards Bramford.
That's not owned by the same owner.
It's just foundations there.
The others, the more, the more typical kind of mixed use is like Village Walk, where you have actually retails on the first floor and then residential use on the second floor. Or Strawberry Hill, where you also have retail on the first floor and then apartments above. In the case of Village Walk, it was actually originally approved as offices up above, retail on the first floor. Then when we changed the zoning to allow residential, all those offices got converted over into residential use. I think Strawberry Hill was developed originally with office on the second floor and retail on the first.
One other question, uh, just to that last one, that, um, you know, we recently approved Town Central South, you know, around Old Woodfield. Does that mean the I1 in that area is going to become residential area? Are we going to change that zone long-term wise down the road? Because it's.
Well, you may recall, we approved a new overlay zone called Town Center South Overlay District, which doesn't change the underlying zone, so it's still industrial, for example, on Arrow Paving. But it allows developers to propose residential uses that can be approved by special permit, subject to different criteria that we created there. The idea being to encourage the redevelopment of those industrial uses for, in that case, residential, without rezoning them to residential and taking away the, whatever rights they have to use the property for industrial. So for the owners of the property, it preserves what they have now, but hopefully encourages them to convert it to development that we think is more appropriate. That's the idea of these.
But would you want to have residential which to Arrow Paving?
No, you don't have to have. The idea is that you go, Arrow Paving at some point, they say, geez, you know, this is prime land. And we can get a lot of money for it if we convert to residential, which is probably, if we were to do things today, we would want to see in that neighborhood.
Right, that's, that's when, when, I mean, the develop, the property owner wants to do residential.
But we're not forcing the owner, so if the owner wants to stay industrial and run his business there, he or she can.
But that doesn't have any, that doesn't really have anything to do with this, with this proposed table. But the whole subject of residential uses in commercial zones and what the density is, that's also a bigger subject than what we're talking about here. All we're talking about here is allowing the same density of residential use in the, in the SC and the SCW as we do in all the other commercial zones.
Okay, next. We removed excavation, removal of the positive earth, loam, topsoil, sand, grumbles, debris, blah, 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 because it's already got its own article. Article eight, um, has, it's totally dedicated to that topic. And so there was no reason to list it as a use on this table. Okay, then farms. We added farms. We took it out of the C2 since we didn't think Yale was going to take itself down anytime soon and put up farms. And we added it to, um.
All the other commercial use.
Every other commercial use except for the shopping center. We left it out of Walmart.
It used to be a cornfield.
Yep.
Why not, I mean.
I mean, we could have added it.
Might not put it in there for that too.
Would this make, if this was approved within, would this make this as a right?
Yep. Yes, as a permit.
So. I, I'm a very big supporter of farms, but I, I don't know that, um, that something like, I mean, it may not, it may not be possible in Guilford, but something like a dairy farm or a farming operation that produces a lot of byproduct, like newer and that sort of stuff, should be allowed just by a standard permit and as a right.
Under our regulations, you don't even have to have, you don't have to have site plan approval or anything. If you want to create a farm, you can do it. If you're not building anything, you don't even need a building permit.
We do have limits on animal units.
We do have.
That I've had to read several times.
And that combination thereof.
If for some reason you wanted.
It's not a problem that we've ever had.
Whether it's livestock or dairy operation, there would be regulations that people would have to conform to. But if you want to bulldoze down Walmart and that whole area and put in a cornfield, you, you could do it, although financially, that's, it's probably not going to happen. But in any event, that's.
Actually, you can't do it under our current regulations.
No, we won't be doing that. But not now, but with the new regulations, you would be able to.
Yes.
But up to a certain number of chickens, you actually, that concern is, is valid and we.
But that's true anywhere in town, I mean, where you can, can raise it now, so.
Farms are just about allowed in every single zone in town. I mean, all the residentials and now almost.
I mean, as a practical matter, I don't think you're going to see a lot more of farms. If anything, unfortunately, you see less and more development there.
I don't think you're going to see them on quarter acre lots, uh.
I don't think you're going to see them in the commercial zones because they cost too much.
But it's nice to have that opportunity.
With legalization of marijuana, you know, horizon, maybe things change.
You never know. Alright, any more questions on farms? Alright, nine, financial, financial institutions. Uh, we added it to C4W, other than that.
And we added a definition because apparently we didn't have one.
Yes, we gave it a definition. I don't know why it was such a complicated thing, but we should put it in there. Okay.
What are financial institutions, are banks?
We have a definition, the definition's.
It's on the definitions page. Then we removed ten. And we kind of incorporated it into metalworking and 41A. It's not exactly something we have a lot of, it's more of, um, the type of, if you were doing.
Well, we have three, we have three hundred.
Not, not anymore. So now we need more of an accessory use as art or, you know, something along that line. So it's obvious, it's not, totally not allowed, but it would be in a more appropriate situation. Okay.
So when people are welding in their garages.
That's a residential property. And it's, it's an accessory use.
It's an accessory use though, if they continue, if they sell.
If they're doing a business.
They can't do, they can't do that at residential.
That's right, I mean, it depends on what they're doing, if they're restoring their car or they're welding, that's one thing. If they're welding business, they can't do that.
Okay, number 10, adult-oriented facilities. Uh, did you get ahold of attorney officer?
I did.
Yeah? Do you have some comment?
I don't, other than she's going to. I queried the, why does it have to be? I queried the, why does it have to be permitted somewhere as opposed to by special permit? And she said she was going to forward to me, which she may have, or I have yet seen it, whatever the case law is. I mean, among her comments, we're talking about limiting hours of operation and size of store and things that I, that struck me as being the kind of thing that can be done under a special permit, but couldn't be done under a site plan. So I wondered exactly how she thought we could limit hours of operation unless they go through the zoning regulation themselves that says you can have an adult oriented facility so long as you're only open until 10:00 PM or something?
We have density under that.
Well, we do have a maximum store size limitation in this proposal. Let me just back up by saying that, you know, we've had a number of conversations about this, including with an attorney a number of years ago, is an expert in this. And essentially right now, if somebody wanted to develop an adult oriented, adult, what we call, an adult facility, which is a retail store, bar, restaurant, cabaret, nightclub or theater, including movie theater, where the product sold, entertainer provided or services rendered are primarily of a sexually explicit nature. If they wanted to establish a retail store where the product is, the product sold is of a sexually explicit nature, they could locate in any, any commercial zone that allows retail stores under our current regulations.
They're not agreeing.
Because so, we can't distinguish, we don't distinguish between the products sold in retail stores. What this does is establish a special category of retail stores which sell products of a sexually explicit nature, whatever that is. And they're only allowed in this, under this proposal, in the TS2 zone.
Which we just expanded by 35 acres, correct? In our wisdom, infinite wisdom, I think.
And they are limited to five, they can't occupy space greater than 5,000 square feet and they can't be any closer than 1,000 feet from any other such facility or use by virtue of this proposal.
Does it make sense to have radius of schools, churches, houses of worship, daycare facilities?
As long as it doesn't preempt, you know, they're okay.
Right, there are so many services they can't be anywhere.
TS2, TS2 is pretty close to the high school, so. So you'd go like a 10 mile radius.
Well, I mean, maybe more work is, it sounds like some more work is required with regard to.
The whole point of the discussion is that right now, we're concerned that this point anywhere in Guilford that allows retail could allow.
Yes.
That's right.
This way, if we give them a zone, that gives them a location and it takes them out of all those other zones. They can't go in the other zones anymore because we specified a location for them.
And it may not ultimately be the TS2, it could be industrial.
It could be any zone.
Well, part of the cleverness of TS2 before was that so much of it was built and it was pretty small.
And that's.
But that was 35 acres ago.
Right.
And two weeks ago.
Right.
A lot of these TS2 zones that we had up until our last meeting were very small and they added up to not very much space.
Right.
And yet, there was enough of it that we could stand in front of a judge and say, this adult store owner wants to be outside of the TS2 zone, we have this zone, he needs to find a spot in this completely crowded zone that also allows lots of much more valuable uses. So ultimately, an adult video store owner does not choose to come to our town.
Videos, 60s.
Videos. Sorry, adult oriented entertainment owner decides not to come to our town. The problem now is that we finger painted all over that strategy two weeks ago by adding 35 to the TS2 area.
Let's not rehash the decision that you didn't agree with. Let's just move forward with this. If TS2 is not the appropriate zone, either not.
I was explaining why, Mr. Chairman.
It's not that we need to try to make a recommendation to another and I know people have.
And there could be more TS2 zones in the future.
And I would love to hear the suggestions of the people that decided this wasn't.
I did hear from Chuck on this point too. The other observation, we probably, we need to think about, well, we need to think about two things. One, with respect to this item particularly, and because it is so litigious, one, we need to make a finding for why we decide, whatever it is, we want, wherever it wants to go, why we decided that. And then also, on the subject of the maximum store size, we need to have some kind of rationale or finding for why we set 5,000 square feet. Because as I understand it, the typical store, whatever, BIP, it's probably seen advertised, I think they tend to be a little bit larger than 5,000 square feet. So how we, you know, we gotta, we have to have some kind of rationale or finding for why we do that.
Is that something that could be.
So needs more research.
Right. Research and work.
The other thing that I spoke with the attorney about, she said it would make an awful lot of sense if you took it out of zoning and put it into an ordinance, which would require our selectmen and maybe our first selectman to stand up and take the stand in terms of whether.
We discussed that before. We've had that conversation already.
Opposed to adult oriented facilities?
Her original, her original recommendation was to do both and that the two things work together, that there is an ordinance that requires a license or permit from the town.
Right. Yeah, something that allows the hours and some of the policing.
The operational aspects of it.
In the rate of, in terms of not in this way.
Okay.
All right, are we finished with this one?
Hang on.
All right, are we done with this one?
I think so, for now with what we have. Let's move on to the next one since we have.
All right. Motor vehicle repair is defined by Connecticut general statutes. That stayed the same except for C4W. We allowed it instead of permitted, we put it as a special permit.
Okay.
Like it is unanimously, yes. Then.
Are we worried that that's a taking in any way?
No. No. Newer used motorcycles, this, that was D for this other section. It became, it removed it from there and because we were trying to do motor vehicle repair and sales close together, most of the time they are in the same building and accessory uses one to the other. We have added retail sales of newer used motor vehicles, including motorcycles, trucks, trailers, or farm equipment and the rentals thereof. And we put it in the same zones as the motor vehicle repair, which would be I-1, I-2, TS, TS2 and C4W. C4W is where the.
That's where they are now.
Is Land Rover, right?
Yeah.
Oh, exit 57.
Yeah.
And so we also, so we are adding this in industrial zones, that's a subsequent change.
That's right.
As well as TS2, both TS and TS2 can have those facilities.
Questions? All right.
Shopping centers?
Shopping centers, special permit.
No, it's TS and TS2.
Oh, it's TS and TS2, it's just off in an angle. I'm sorry. I'm on set.
Okay, yeah, I didn't have, George did the original spread, you know, the yellow and the not yet and the original and the new. And when I took his, I just cut and paste them into a Word document instead of Excel. Now they're all jiggy and jaygy. So it's just living.
I've gotten used to it.
Okay, as long as you get crooked, eyes crooked, you can see it fine. Okay, we went from lodging to lodging and conference centers, 12, which was 12 and then became 13. And that includes also bed and breakfasts, which would be allowed in the C1, which was not allowed before in C1. We also allowed it in C2 in case, but they do have that front parcel there at Yale, but they, you never know what they're going to do with that. Might be a good spot for lodging for people who have medical needs or whatever.
I don't remember, the committee did not see the reasoning for requiring special permits.
Yeah, we didn't understand the reason for the special permit requirement and we just changed it to permits.
Yeah, special permit in some zones, but not others.
Right.
The other one we left in was MU. I'll see.
MUOS, because MUOS has it written in its line and its uses that they specifically wanted everything in that zone treated with special permit. Questions on that?
Why didn't we allow it in the shopping center zone? I can't remember.
Because we had one little tiny shopping center zone.
Okay.
Well, what if it burns down? Yeah, how's that different than going?
Putting a form in?
Or putting, or putting housing in.
Well, how could we go above the other buildings, the offices?
If someone wanted to make a change of use there and make it, you know, a conference facility, it might be really nice.
I have no problem with it. If you guys decide you want to change it to that, that's fine with me.
Why don't we make a note of that, Tom, and then when we discuss this, we can bring that up after we hear from the public and see if they have.
I mean, there was no strong argument against it.
Just make the point, ring it out after our discussion.
Carry it over. Okay, entertainment facilities, including movie theaters, playhouses, nightclubs and adult entertainment, got reduced to entertainment facilities, including movie theaters and playhouses. We added it to C1 as a special permit because there used to be a theater downtown on the green, apparently, once upon a time. And we also added it then to the I-1 and I-2 since it's sitting out there with nothing going on and it's nice wooded areas with big huge parcels. And we added it to shopping center in case they wanted to put a movie theater in the.
The logic facility, the conference center.
The conference center, that's right.
Rock pile, actually, it was supposed to be a movie theater one time. The rock pile was supposed to be a movie theater.
Yeah.
Well, it was, it was.
It's in the loud use up there.
It's loud there now. No change in that.
We increased the number of uses on the rock pile considerably, but that one was already there. Okay, 14, manufacturing, which was this long drawn out outdated terminology, which I'm not going to read. And we just summarized it as manufacturing, C definition. We also did that with.
And we added SC or SCW for manufacturing? SCW?
We added it to SCW. Also did that with the crust of manufacturing, which kept going on and on.
Yeah, it's all the same, just compressed.
So compressed it all in. All right. Marine facilities. We had David Mort on our commission, I mean, on our committee, because he owns the boat dock and we thought that, I mean, the marina, we thought he might be able to give us a little more perspective on why the marina's uses were so long in detail. It's, it's a, as it exists now, it's a really long, ridiculous use. And so we broke it up, we simple, we combined them and we ended up with a lot less than we started with that said more and with less words. We obviously did, we did not change it a lot. We did change it to allow the sale, repair and servicing of boats, sales, marine equipment and engines to zones that are not marine, because those things can be done on places besides at the water. So we allowed them in I-1, I-2, TS and TS2.
Why did we add commercial to, to marine facilities?
Where?
We have on.
What are you speaking? It's back on that page.
I'm on a pre, I think I'm on a previous page.
We previously, well, we have, we have two different, we had, A was marinas docks, facilities for pleasure vessel, pleasure vessels. B was docks, board slip basins for commercial or commercial fisheries. We combined that and said marine docks, boards for pleasure and commercial.
Since they were the same zones.
They're all in the same place, both are there.
At the time, marina, they did one. Correct. And that got combined, sale and storage of boats got shrunk a little bit, expanded some of the uses because presumably you can sell boat engines or sails or anything, doesn't have to be in the marine district. We changed dry storage of boats that used to be in accessory or subordinate use and allowed it in industrial. It's presumably you could put a boat rack on industrial property if you wanted to.
Yes.
We don't have any facilities that dispense fuel in town today at the dock?
Only as an accessory use at the dock.
So it's understood that that can continue as an accessory use and that's.
That happens somewhere, I think.
Yes.
That's why we said, we took dispensing of fuel and lubricants at retail out.
Page seven of 21, it says sale, repair and servicing of boats, including dispensing of fuel and lubricants at retail, but expressly excluding bulk storage of fuel. Now that's, part's gone, so you could make an argument that, well, maybe, you know, servicing engines, you could say you could keep oil there, but you can't sell fuel anymore.
We, we eliminated everything that was obviously an accessory use, that would be, with understanding that accessory uses are allowed by right, we eliminated. And that was an accessory use.
I think that's how we.
Why, it's understood that that is accessory use on the record, then I'm fine with it.
That would be the only way, you couldn't have a service station on a water.
No, 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 I understand that. I'm just saying that as long as people can still dispense fuel at the dock if they need to.
We did not eliminate that.
Assuming they're.
Correct.
Remember the requirements, environmental requirements.
Okay, shellfish processing. We changed that much? No. We just added it to I-1 and I-2. And then the research laboratories, we just got rid of the special permitted and made it permitted. And we combined the education, right, with the.
Yeah, there was a separate line for research labs and a separate line for schools and we decided to make them all.
Yeah, and put them all together, same zones anyway, so. All right, that one was, then we kept the, then the last part of that, the same, the only thing that we, is offices, J, we used to allow offices down in our very limited marine based zones. And we decided that we didn't want to spend our marine based zones on offices. You can have an office in business that's already there as an accessory use, as right, but not to put an office building on our very limited C1, C2M, M R1 zones.
So take me back again. There's, there's an office building at the town marina, right?
It's a CD zone.
That's a CD.
It's not a marine zone.
That's a puzzling CD zone.
Yeah, we did not recommend converting it to the C2M, which is down there, because it is something we didn't want to allow. So we just left it alone for now. It's on my list of things to call or remind George he needs to address one of his days after I'm gone. Okay. Seventeen, motor vehicle filling stations. That stayed the same. Eighteen, motor vehicle washing establishments. Because of the technology and car washes in this day and age in comparison to the old days, we expanded that to be allowed in the I-1, I-2 and TS2 and C4W zones. It was already allowed in TS. Nineteen, office buildings. Offices, business and professional. We just made the change, we took it out of C2M, for the reasons I just said, about offices in our limited marine areas. Personal service establishments.
Is this more adult entertainment? Is this part of the adult entertainment thing?
No.
Personal service establishment is a business providing non-medical services relating to the bodily care of individuals such as hair care, grooming, nail care response. So it could be adult entertainment, but.
What would things like a Pilates, like a chiropractor or acupuncture?
That's a professional.
Medical?
Business and professional. All right.
Massage is, I think, I think that's a licensed occupation.
It is, yes.
So that, that would be business or professional office as well. Spas are sort of a gray area, obviously.
It's like exaggerated salon.
Well, generally speaking, for professional, you need a license to do it.
Some kind of state license, yes.
Some kind of a state where.
Which I don't know.
So that would be the difference between the two.
On the other hand, I think for like personal service.
personal service, which is like haircutting, you need a license for that too. So it's a gray area, you're right.
It's hard to draw that distinction. We have that zoning enforcement license from time to time.
It has to stay, yeah, it's M U O S.
Yeah, it is leaving it, because that's what it is listed under the...
And you can't have the use in M U O S. It isn't a special permit.
Yeah, I was just asking what that...
The column is, yeah, yeah. All right. And then places of worship. We just added them into all the zones as by special permit. They're allowed in all the residential zones, and now they're allowed in all...
Why shopping centers? Why shopping centers?
Well, that happens.
They do have churches in shopping centers. It's not an uncommon thing, actually, in this day and age.
Really?
Yeah.
Not here.
Don't, don't check over like a big box, you know, like a form of coils or whatever.
Make their churches in there.
Why, why is this all special permit, though? I don't understand that.
Because of traffic.
Yeah, I guess, traffic.
Traffic, parking.
Traffic and traffic capacity.
Yep. Gives you more control. Oh, you were here for the Habad one.
I was here.
That was quite a big thing.
I think the biggest issue there is because it was bordering on a residential area.
In that particular case.
In that particular case. And in a situation like that, where it's proposed in some of these zones bordering on other zones, it's a good item to have in your back pocket just to make sure that it's, it works in that neighborhood. So I, I would agree that it should be by special permit.
Printing establishments, we simplified considerably. It was 5,000, it had this different square footage designations. Now, print is, printing is done by computers and it's not done with toxic materials and odors and all of this. And so we, you know, you can do them in shopping centers, you can do them anywhere. And so we changed the zones to, that, changed it to the zones that seemed to work with it and simplified the wording on it. Public utility substations.
It's not an S.
Storage and maintenance. You trying to figure out my cat and my columns again?
Is it allowed in SCW?
Yes. It's allowed in TS, TS2, shopping center, and SC and SCW. That's the proposed allow, change. And C4W, because there's no reason it shouldn't be allowed where Land Rover is. I mean, if it goes away, then, you know, we wanted to make that property as usable as possible. Public utility substations without service yards or outside storage of supply. We just simplified to public utility substations, storage and maintenance facilities, and we took them out of C1, C2, CM, C2M, and MR1, and just left them in the I zones.
Keep in mind that if they are truly public utility, they're going to be exempted while we're zoning anyway.
Anyways, right.
Over a certain level of kilowatts, if I remember correctly.
We were going to remove it altogether, and then that came up that we would have some...
For small exhaust stations.
For the smaller units.
This sort of suggests that if we do have any authority, that that's where we want them to be, industrial zones.
But we have them in, what, C4, right now, we've got them?
Right, but if they're, if they're over a certain threshold, it'd be, it used to be the DPUC, now it's something else.
Well, we, we have them residential zones.
That's where they mostly are. But if it's, if it's over a certain threshold, it's out of local control.
Okay. Number 29. Retail sales and/or storage of coal and fuel oil. All right. We had Glenn Weston Murphy, who is a professor at Yale and the chairman of the Energy Task Force for the Town of Guilford. He came and spoke to us about the differences in the types of fuels. And that is available on my computer. We have the recording of that meeting. If anybody absolutely wants to hear it, we can download that. It was a very educational meeting, because we wanted to know what the differences are and whether or not they were going to be conducive to high residential, densely residential areas. So by the time we got done, it ended up that we thought that it should be allowed by special permit in either one of the I zones.
Why not TS2?
Why not TS2? Because of the size of the parcels, mostly.
This is bulk storage. Yes, but you're...
This is bulk storage, yeah. Not, not like just filling your little barbecue tanks like you have at your store.
Well, the only zone it's allowed in now is I-1.
Yes, we expanded it.
Well, technically, not even allowed in I-1 because of the definition.
Right, our new definition.
Heating, heating all is.
A couple of questions. First of all, we say liquefied gas or similar gases. That means nitrogen can't be, it falls under this as well.
I'm on words with you.
Is it a similar gas stored under pressure?
Well, that's what I mean. I mean, here's...
If it's, well, if it's bulk storage, well, we just talked, presumably the answer would be yes, but what we just talked about and approved was not a separate, it was an accessory of the use of the facility. But yeah, I think it would ultimately fall under that. I think I was attempting to try and capture everything, I mean, propane by definition is either liquefied natural gas or liquefied petroleum gas. I can't remember which it is, but if I just listed that, people would say, where's propane? So we put down propane.
No, no, I, I mean, I understand that propane, liquefied natural gas, liquefied petroleum gas, hydrogen. I'm just saying, would this include, you know, liquefied air, liquefied nitrogen?
Well, it says other gases stored under pressure.
It would fall under that.
Yeah, I, I, that's why I just want to make sure.
We beat that one to the bill.
I go back to my question, though. TS2, that's 35 acres that we just approved.
When we proposed this, we did not have 35 acres approved.
What if someone wanted to, for example, you know, propane is going to increase as a fuel for heating in this country, a tremendous amount. If someone wanted to put two 30,000-gallon tanks on 20, on 20 acres on that property, it might be a perfect spot for it.
But the minimum watt size in a TS2 zone is half an acre, 20,000 square feet, right?
Well, let me...
I'm saying, but what if they what, five watts, and they had 20,000 feet, and they wanted to put two 30,000-gallon tanks there?
Well, let me make a suggestion. Why don't we just get through the presentation, hear from the public, and then, that's another item, Tom, I think you want to mark, so we'll we have discussion.
Subject to propane, this will, keep in mind also that the commission has received an application to amend the text of the zoning regulations for CD zone to allow bulk storage of propane in CD zones under certain circumstances. So that is pending for you. So keep in, meaning that you need to keep in a, with mind on that subject.
So why don't, I, I mean, I think what we're trying to do first is to try to just get through all this, get an explanation. I mean, it doesn't mean that this is how it's all going to get voted out, but the process would be this, then questions, hearing from the public, and then during our discussions, if we want to add, make it SP everywhere or take it off everywhere, I mean, whatever it comes out, it comes out, but that would be the time to get into the merits of it.
Right.
We do, presumably, we, in the changing this, from the wording that, as it reads now, coal and fuel oil, bulk storage of coal would not be permitted under regulations.
Right. I don't think anybody would have a problem with that.
Right, correct. Nor would any other...
Not least this century.
Railroad sightings number 25. That one went away, as we do have railroad sightings, but according to our town planner, that is more of a transit and not a land use topic, right?
Right. Sort of like a driveway.
All right. Research laboratories. We added it to TS by special permit as a counterpart to TS2. We permitted it in SCW and C4W, as we felt like it was compatible with those areas.
Now, we have three examples of special permit here. M U O S, I understand, everything really needs to be special permitted in M U O S if it's going to exist.
TS and TS2 because of the size and the natures of those zones.
Because of the small lots.
Yeah, those are more dense zones. I'm thinking as research facilities, not all that don't need to be, typically are sort of larger.
But we also, I mean, as much as, as much as is available, we're looking to encourage that kind of development.
We tried, we tried to develop a definition of research, actually, we call it research laboratories, but we call it research facilities in the text here. So I guess we should be consistent, but, you know, what's the difference between, you know, a professional, an office of engineers and a research facility?
It's not, yeah, it's not automatically someplace where they test medicines on animals, you know?
Right, it's not chemicals or globally called, necessarily.
But wherever we put special permit, we make it much less likely that anyone is going to jump.
No.
Well, it shouldn't be.
We make, we give ourselves a little bit more discretion and a little bit more...
We still can't be arbitrary about the decision. We have to have reasons if it's not approved that, you know, are good ones. It can't just, so it's, you know, it can't, we can't grant it if they don't have a good reason for not doing so. Okay. Unless we have a good reason for not doing so.
27. Recreational facilities other than of the town, including gymnasiums and physical fitness establishments and studios for dance, musical and theatrical, theatrical instruction. We changed the, the, we got rid of special permit in C1, C2. We made it permitted. And we...
Why'd we leave it special permit in industrial zones?
You know, I don't know. We had talked about the concern over traffic down in, with 18-wheelers in that area and...
Is that why?
And we want to be able to control that aspect of it, but that was the only thing I remember.
We actually have, I think, two recreation facilities now located in our industrial zones.
I mean, the Soundview.
Soundview.
Well, we'll mark that and we'll discuss it during the...
Yeah.
To discussions.
We were getting way the number of weeks. All right. Number 28. We used to have a lot of different restaurant uses, and we just simplified them basically down to two. Restaurants without drive-through and restaurants with drive-through. And we allowed restaurants with drive-through in only one place, and that was on the rock pile, and, and SCW. And we, we increased the places allowing of restaurants in other zones, regular restaurants, in the I-1, I-2 by special permit, and, and the M U O S and the C4, where they were not allowed before.
We used to have this really weird language, sort of tried, tried to suggest that restaurants that were carryout, you know, weren't allowed or they're only allowed in certain circumstances, which was like impossible to monitor. And obviously, most restaurants are carryout these days, or at least half of them are, so we just did away with that whole baggage and just got two categories, restaurants and then restaurants that had drive-through.
Is that some kind of 60s formulation?
Yeah, like we might discourage like a dairy queen or something like that, because, you know, it was undesirable.
I would add to restaurants that we currently have a grandfathered in. And legal, and, and whenever, whenever we decided to talk about this, they just unanimously assumed that I was, that we were going to remove drive-through entirely. And I said, no, I want to see it at least talked about for SCW, because McDonald's owns the entire I-95 corridor in our neck of the woods or other, or at least if they don't, it's very limited franchise available on the highway. And it seemed to me like a perfect spot for Burger King and all of their affiliates, which is like Colonel Sanders and Taco Bell and Pizza Hut, to come in and do something that could compete with that, that was right off the highway on a huge parcel of land, that, I mean, that would fit for them and that they could afford a septic system that would go up there, that would be required. And, you know, gases at that stop, so let's, why not? And see if something actually happens.
The bottom line is a done, it was the only person on the committee who wanted this, but the committee is recommending it.
Well, I voted, I had them vote for it to get it on this list, and they voted for it.
Well, that's, that's good, so we got, I mean, I understand, so we'll take that up during the discussion after we...
Forget the public.
Okay.
Wendy's comes before us, I'm after the...
So we've got Wendy's already.
All right, moving along.
Moving along.
Retail propane filling stations?
Retail, retail propane filling station excluding bulk storage. And that's like your little Ocon that we just did out here.
One on the side of both roads.
To the other, yes.
Then we moved to the other side of TS.
Right. And we just allowed the same thing in TS2 in that same sort of facility.
Can I ask a question in the regs? What do we, how would we define bulk storage?
Storage, it's when you're not selling retail.
Bulk storage.
It's when they have a big tank or container or something.
How, well, how, what is big?
That's storing it in bulk.
Is a thousand gallons big?
No.
It's not by the size, it's by...
It's by who the customers are.
Yes, it's by who your customer is.
And bulk means wholesale. Right.
So what we're saying is that as long as you're filling retail propane tanks, if you want to put a 20,000-gallon tank in, you're okay.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
It's a good idea.
But if you put a 20,000-gallon tank in and you use a bobtail to haul it to the customer's location, you can't do that. That's, that's the way I interpret this, right?
Yeah.
So maybe we, that needs, maybe we've got some more retail.
More attention, yes.
Because I, I think I see where Tom is coming from. But, but it's good to get this out on the table. We'll take it. So next, next item.
With energy. With energy. It's already allowed in our regs as special permitted use in all non-residential zones, within all the framework criteria of that specific article, I mean, section. And so we just went ahead and added it to the chart. It hadn't been here before. It's in 27388. All right. Then, retail sales and/or storage of lumber, building materials, except heavy construction materials. So we...
That had been buried in some other weird corner.
Yes, the one where you don't need fuel on everything.
Yeah, we just made it a separate line item.
I hate to be a pain, but do we have a definition of heavy construction materials?
Is that like steel?
We have that discussion. Sort of, you know it when you see it.
Yes, those big concrete culvert things, and that kind of stuff.
We don't have a definition.
We don't have a definition.
All right, culvert.
All right. 31. Retail stores. We never have anywhere in our regs now that just specifically says retail stores. We just, we have stores where goods, except the items listed in 29, are sold at retail with stock primarily stored within the confines of the principal building or buildings, but excluding shopping centers. What? Nowadays, retail stores don't even carry their inventory for the most part. I mean, they replenish continuously, and it's not something that they like keep tons of on, on site.
Why, why did we remove it from MUC1 and 2?
We never had it in. I don't think they're allowed under the MUC1 and 2 itemized.
Okay, does it shows it?
It shows that it was.
It was up here, that's my question.
I think that may not be.
But those zones have itemized uses. Or some kind of accessory.
They were accessory uses.
That's right.
All right, so then there shouldn't be P's there.
You took them out.
Right. So there shouldn't be, actually.
Well, there's a P before.
And they're still permitted now.
They're still permitted, but they're...
As an accessory. Okay, so that's fine. Let me just make a note, so I don't question that later.
Right.
Okay.
Why not in the, they're not in I-1 and I-2?
What's that?
Retail stores are not permitted in I-1 and I-2.
No.
Neither are restaurants.
But they will be if your proof is.
Restaurants?
Restaurants by special permit.
Oh, yeah, right.
We thought that'd be a great place for like one of the big brewery, brew, brew pub, pubs, where you could have, you know, need bigger facilities and could make your own alcohol and serve it. Private schools. We used to be schools, colleges, and universities, including daycare facilities, that being, if they're nonprofit, we don't really have any, what is that? We allow it everywhere, basically, didn't we, in the residential zones too? And so we decided this was basically private schools, colleges, and universities. And we allowed, we... And we allowed, we added the additional zones as permitted.
So now Guilford University can go anywhere in town?
Well, yes.
Wait, what about a daycare preschool? Is that a separate item somewhere? In your, in your explanation, it says daycare preschool, so is it specifically noted?
Yes.
Is that a separate use?
There is daycare, adult and child.
Where is it? Do you remember? Like, that's what I remember.
Have they not come up to it yet? Seems like we should have passed it.
I know, I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Now, there's dog here, well, not mine.
Daycare, dog care.
Because we, we decided to make a.
I thought we merged them somehow.
We did merge it, but it was farther back. It sounds like I must have gone right past it and no one noticed. Or I, in my cut and paste.
I don't see it off the top of my mind.
I don't recall having seen that, so.
But we did have that.
We had a discussion and I think we decided to either merge it, well, I think, we might have decided to merge it, but I think there's a quality difference.
We made it, adult and child, daycare.
Children and daycare makes more noise.
Well, at least we know that it looks like it is a separate category. Why don't, for the next.
We got an excellent.
Well, just something, I mean, you know, that's, something this complex is not unusual. There's a few things missing. So why don't we just go back and see what the notes were and what the committee agreed where it should go and we'll get that included for the next hearing.
Was there a real reason for not having it in I-one or I-two, having schools, colleges, um, universities in I-one or I-two before? Just sort of developed that way? Is there any rational?
Those are old zones.
Like the idea that, you know, the trucks might run over the little kids or something?
That's.
Well, that or the noise or something, you know, part of it too, I mean, it's, depends on who you talk to, but some people would say, well, we should be preserving the I-one and I-two zones for industrial type activities.
For industrial, those kinds of.
Because they bring in higher taxes or something, so.
Okay.
You know, it depends on who you talk to. I think we need to just take a fresh look here and make a decision here today, what we think is best for the town.
Thank you.
Okay, um, veterinary hospitals. We changed to veterinary facilities. And we added that to, um, zones with basically looking, to other zones just looking at second capacity as being more of a control, um, put it in. We added it to the SC, the, SCW. Is that, am I looking at my chart right?
Yep.
SC, SCW and C-four W. I-one, I-two, PB and BD two. All right, warehouses excluding trucking terminals. Um, we moved, removed that from TS two because size and warehouse structures were being compatible with character of TS two zone.
What's the difference between a warehouse and a trucking terminal? Is it the intensity of use or the number of trucks that come in?
A warehouse, someplace you store stuff, a trucking terminal.
Yeah, but a warehouse, you still gotta bring the truck in to unload it and then another truck in to pick it up and bring it out, so I'm just trying to, in my own mind, understand what's the difference.
I always thought a trucking terminal as being a place like a truck stop.
Well, I think a trucking terminal is where you pull a big truck up.
I don't know, that's what I'm trying to get to the bottom of.
I would liken a truck terminal to almost a large loading dock. The idea is that they bring trucks in from all over the country and then they, like UPS, they immediately take the stuff off the truck, try to find a truck that's going out the next morning to deliver to a local user. Where a warehouse would be a big enclosed building where it may have 300,000 square feet of inventory.
Okay.
Sure.
But there needs to be a way that you get that inventory into the warehouse.
Yeah, I mean, I know what you, I know what you're saying. There's trucks this side, this side, the stuff comes in and it goes like this and out the next truck that, that evening is, is what you're saying.
Well, every warehouse needs a truck terminal to bring the goods in.
Maybe you voted that.
It's just how long the stuff stays there, maybe, I don't know, but maybe we can just look to refining that a little bit.
Scratch out, including the truck.
Well, no, no, I, I mean, if, I think there was probably stuff that we don't want to have happen here where there's a lot of truck traffic, stuff in and out.
I think you're thinking of Blaisdonnes and like a truck stop, like the place over in Branford, the exit fifty-six.
Well, that's one thing, no, that's, that's different.
It's a warehouse.
Yeah, that's different.
Is it a trucking terminal?
I don't, I don't, to me, that's a truck stop.
Yeah.
A truck, trucking terminal is a much higher intensity where they're coming in day and night and going out day and night and shifting stuff around. Warehouse to me means the stuff sits there for a while before it goes out, I don't know. But maybe we could just.
So we're still.
Definition.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not against anything here, I just want to make sure we get the definitions right so we don't have somebody coming in later.
That's kind of difficult though, because you took somebody like, you took somebody like Walmart or Ace or True Value. I know, because I own a True Value store, that their warehouse has over two hundred, two hundred docks for trucks.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, the home goods up near where I work is.
Yeah.
An amazing amount of truck.
Well, let's, let's see if we can't reword that. I mean, I do too, but I just want to make sure it's clear. All right, why don't we move forward?
Okay, um, wholesale businesses, we removed in table five. I don't remember why. Anybody got a comment on that? We don't have a big wholesale.
What is our set business? I think we're trying to figure out what one was, but we can't think of one.
Yeah, whereas the difference between that and a warehouse.
No, I, I mean, I, I see, I see True Value's warehouse as a wholesale business. They sell on wholesale to me so I can sell the retail.
So it's the same thing as a warehouse?
Yeah, I think that's why we decided.
Well, not necessarily. A warehouse could be a Sears warehouse selling, owning the Sears stores.
Actually.
Wholesale can sell to anybody.
I would think New England, uh, plumbing New England that's down here on Route one is a wholesale business.
They sell retail.
But they, but they're primarily a wholesale business though. They may sell retail, they have a resale counter, but their job is to sell to plumbers who are then reselling the product to consumers.
I hate to say I have drawn a blank on that.
I think that falls on the retail story.
Yeah.
So we need to mark that and figure out what we're talking about.
Well, I would, well, let me, we'll get to that. Mark, because, I mean, I don't think we don't want to have any wholesale distribution in town. There may be places where it's appropriate, but let's, we'll save that for discussion, okay? I think I know where we're coming from, so why don't we just mark it?
Why wouldn't you want wholesale business in, in I?
Well, that's what I'm saying, so let's bring that up when we get to the discussion.
I thought it was part of warehouse.
That's what we were thinking.
Maybe we would say warehouse including wholesale distribut, distribution or something, but we, it needs to be in there somewhere.
Where's Maroso?
Manufacturing.
Manufacturing.
You think they, they actually, they actually make things that they sell from that building?
Never been inside.
Well, they, they sell it to somebody, probably wholesalers, I don't know, but the point is, let's, let's come back to it, that's a good point you raised and we need to take it up when we discuss it.
Okay, thirty-six. Artist studio galleries and other establishments where art or craft merchandise is created, displayed and sold. And we took that out of C-two M because it's not a running use. And we added it, we took it also out of MUC one and MUC two because we didn't feel like it was really in keeping with the intent of those zones. And we added it to the I-zones because we didn't see that it was incompatible with the I-zones.
What did, did the committee see as the intent of the MUC one and MUC two, the commercial piece of those?
I don't, I think that might fall in the same category as the retail store one.
Yeah, I think we looked in the.
It's accessory.
Yeah, because this doesn't, that doesn't look right the way it's.
Way it's worded, it's more of an accessory use.
Well, that's, I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, you know it for the right reason.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind saying it's not a permitted use if everybody understands it's an accessory use.
It is permitted.
But I, but what I worry about is later we get into some, you know, two years from now, somebody comes with an application and the next commission says, well, you can't do that, it's not permitted.
Right. Um, yeah, you know, the idea, we thought it was like a clean sweep clearing up the accessory uses, but if it's going to leave gaps on.
Well, I mean, I think what we were trying to do also was to clarify or to clean up inconsistencies. Table five listed that as a permitted use, but the M, what's, the MUC one and the MUC two have usually sixteen or seventeen itemized specific permitted uses, and so there was ambiguity in the sense of the zone says here are your uses, doesn't include art galleries, and yet table five chart includes art galleries, so are they permitted or are they not? We were attempting to clarify that and.
I mean.
Down inside, I'm not sure if the MUC one is where you really need an artist studio. Maybe it is, but I think that our intent was to clarify and easier to take it out of table five than to add it into the.
Yeah, no, I, I don't have a problem again, I just want to make sure we underst, I mean, if I was to come in at MUC one and say I'd like to put an art studio in there, could I do it or not?
The answer now would be no.
Well, I just thought we said I could as an accessory use.
No.
Wasn't it?
I don't know.
Well, that's what I heard, somebody said we could do it as an accessory, it was approved as an accessory use. And now I'm hearing it's not.
Number thirty-seven. Accessory uses except garages for repair, painting or upholstery of autos, trailers or farm equipment was, it was a use. And we took it out entirely because it was accessory uses and we are assuming that this is understood to be allowed. And so if it's an accessory use.
Okay, well, I guess we're going to need to understand what the committee's intention was, because I'm hearing that it's not permitted and then I'm hearing it is permitted as an accessory use.
George is making reference to the retail, which is included as a permitted use under MUC one and MUC two, but it expressly articulates and says when accessory.
When accessory.
And I think he was simply reminding or reiterating the retail stuff, but I think the point was there was an inconsistency between table five, which said permitted, and the uses articulated in these two sections, which did not include those. So we were in an effort to make, make.
Okay, I see where you're coming from.
Inconsistent with the zones, we took it out of the table.
Okay, I see where you're coming from. All right.
All right. Thirty-seven went away and new thirty-seven came in as garden supply stores, including greenhouses. And we moved that from forty-one to this location to allow it and put it in zones where we thought it was in keeping with the character of the zone.
So it's all the, all the commercial zones plus the I?
Yep. Um, garages use, we removed number thirty-eight since it's all allowed as an accessory use under eleven and twelve.
Meaning it's water treatment fair and these are sets.
Yes. Forty-three became thirty-eight, building contractors and landscape contractor facilities, including yards with vehicle and material storage. And this we limited to the I-zones because of the size and the character of the use.
So it's out of TS two because of the character of the use?
Right. And thirty-nine, we removed from our regulations because it's an outdated.
What did I do?
No, it didn't seem like anything we really wanted to be doing. Um, dog care facilities, we removed it from PD two, added it to SC because of the nature of the business and impact on neighborhood and the size of the lots in the PD two zone. Museums stays the same. Trade shops, we simplified that considerably because that was a little strange. We added metalwork, we, um, took A and took out blacksmiths, excluding the use of drop hammers, and just made that metalwork. So it sounded like something I shouldn't like to do. And then we allowed it in the, as we did all of these, we allowed them in the I-one and I-two zones. Tyree tapping her way because it's not even legal.
You are.
Are you tapping? No, you're on your age.
You are, yeah.
Here he is.
You build down the surface of an old tire and you glue a new tread on top of the old tire.
Don't you see those black alligators all over the highways?
It used to be.
That's a re, that's a retread.
Retread.
And we updated undertakers in funeral homes to just be funeral homes. And we increased the number of zones because there was no reason not to allow them in those zones.
Okay.
And that was it.
Due to the, to the late hour, what I'd like to do is, I know there are some members of the public who want to comment on this, so what I would like, how much time do we have? Ten minutes? Okay, why don't we take a break and could you change the DVD and then we'll go back on the record? Okay, we'll do that as quickly as possible so we can move forward. Thank you. What I'd like to do is, I know that people here want to make some statements with regard to this, so rather than do the questions, it's obvious we're not going to finish this tonight and vote on it, I'd like to get the folks that are here who want to comment on this either for or against, to be able to make their comments tonight and try to get that done in a reasonable manner. So I'm going to open it up for comments from the public either for or against the application. Who would like to speak? Nobody wants to?
Well, I will say, several I'll.
Well, is there any way you could condense it? I mean, it's ten o'clock.
Let me just make clear. The propane thing is, is my principal concern. And if you go ahead with it as it is proposed, I will take the appeal, so I've got to make a record.
Okay.
And, you know, that basically means putting on an awful lot of the stuff that we did a year, a year or more ago.
Okay. Is it, is it possible to enter, let into the record?
Not here, because we have other things that at least a couple people on the mission who weren't around then. So, you know, I've got to explain it all.
Okay.
Can I understand, is your concern that you don't want, you don't think bulk storage of propane or liquefied gases of any kind are appropriate in the town of Guilford?
That is in my view.
Okay.
It's just that they've been proposed and put in the wrong places.
The I-one and the I-two zones?
Yeah.
You think there should be somewhere else?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I, I mean, I, I think that no, no father's been there before, really, they're just, they've been plumped down there.
I don't need to tell you off, can you just say your name for the record?
Bob Jolly, eleven one thirty-four one.
Could you turn around maybe or go to the corner so she can film?
Yeah.
Well, I was just, I've been planning to talk about my position, I was just trying to say, so I need time to do it.
Okay. Well, let me do this then, we're going to obviously continue this, perhaps this would be best handled with a special meeting. I'm thinking, George, to, you know, handle the amount of input. So why don't we do this, if I could ask you to just hold your comments, is there anybody else in the room who wants to comment either for or against this application? Sir?
Hi, Ken McKenzie, Sixth Road Street. Along a similar vein to Bob, it's not necessarily propane related, but we have an I-one zone where the Clinipad Building used to be over on High Street, which is a heavily residential zone now, is very close to the green. The streets are very narrow, so I think, I would consider thinking about rezoning that from an I-one zone. To me, that's not an appropriate place for propane and it's probably not an appropriate place for a lot of other industrial type activities. Right now it's got contamination issues, so nobody wants to go in and touch the area. But I'm not aware of any other industrial applications within that I zone, and on the map that I'm looking at now, it appears as if the zone is larger than just that property specifically. So I'm not sure where the lines exactly are in that I-one zone, i.e. how much expansion there is off of that ex Clinipad. I think it's sixty-six High Street, I could be wrong.
Okay. Do, do we have a higher resolution map, George, or something that we can? Okay, so we'll need to get that for the next hearing.
So it might make sense to either rezone that, but again, if, you know, I don't think So, it might make sense to either rezone that, but again, I don't think that's great for propane, but it might not be great for other industrial types of activities either.
Okay.
And it certainly wasn't great for Clinipad, because look what we're left with.
Okay. I appreciate that. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor or against? Sir?
This isn't really, Rob Sonnixon from Walden Associates. You can't really turn around to see me, but I'll be quick.
Not just your address too, sir?
The question is, it's more of a question. Table five, I've seen as basically a quick enumeration of the permitted uses for many zones that are listed within the text of the zoning regulations. And it came up before in discussion, and, and my concern is that we don't have a situation where it's a permitted use or it's not a permitted use in the listing within the text, but it's listed as a permitted use on table five. The, the option could be, when you get to the permitted uses, take the permitted uses out of the text and just say, see table five, and then there's only one enumeration of the permitted uses in any given zone, and you get away from your potential for, you know...
Yeah, that's a good point.
Conflicts between the zoning and the table five. So, that was all I wanted to suggest.
Okay. I appreciate that.
I've been talking to Chuck Andrews about that. That was a suggestion he made also. He said, first, make sure, go through the list, make sure that you've resolved all the incompatibilities, if there are any, and then that probably is the simplest solution, delete the text listing in the text of the regulations themselves.
Okay.
So, but that, we'll have to take a closer look at that.
Okay. Some further thoughtful attention before we vote on it, or...
Right.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor or against before Mr. Jolly? Yes, sir?
If you're willing to have another meeting. It may be that the notice of the meeting ought to be more specific about propane. I don't think the notice that you put out in the advertisement really told people that you were going to add uses like propane storage would never exist before in Guilford. And I think that you've got to be more specific about it.
Yeah.
Something like that.
I...
Because the, the notice was just cleaning things up and dealing with inconsistencies and so on, whereas in fact, there were substantive changes.
Well, that's true. There's a lot of substantive changes, but, I mean, anybody had access to the application or to the, or to the changes which are on file? I happen to disagree with you, but we did ask our council to give us an opinion on that. So...
We didn't ask them yet.
We didn't ask them, but we were, we were going to ask for it. So, we will also take that issue up and see. But, I mean, at least in my opinion, this was adequate enough in that it indicated the table was going to be modified. Those are on the public record that anyone could, they, you know, took the initiative, could come down and take a look at it. So, I mean, that's my opinion. We'll go forward. If this goes to appeal, a judge may disagree with that.
How much would it cost us to enumerate in a detailed way?
I think you'd have to do it all, too. I'd be against that because then it, it looks like you're trying to pick on or point out specific areas against other areas.
Isn't that a meeting of propane for or against we're rezoning?
You'd have to publish, I'd like, you'd have to publish the whole thing. That's right, to be fair.
So, the point is, I understand that Mr. Jolly made a comment about notice. I haven't disagreed, but we have asked our council to, or we talked about today, I guess you're gonna go with a hold of them, we're going to ask for an opinion as to was this notice adequate or not, and we'll go from there.
That's correct.
Okay. Anything else anyone wants to say about this application?
I would just mention that...
I'm sorry. Name it and...
I would just mention that this party created the West End Study Group, which has started deliberations. And the table five actually is going to become the Bible that we work on, because if there's going to be any consideration for expansion of commercial zones on the West End, we'd have to know what the zones are. So, while you are deliberating on getting this thing done and finalizing table five, we're kind of in, we're gonna be in a state of flux until we know what we're actually dealing with. So, conceivably, we could come back to you with recommendations for a use that at some point in the future is no longer in, in what we were considering. So, just take that into consideration while you're dealing with, as you mentioned, a special meeting to deal with a conclusion, hopefully, of what you're doing. I mean, in general, I'm in favor of what the table five committee did, so speaking that direction. I was a part of that as well. I'm a little concerned about throwing the adult entertainment, I voiced it at that time when it came up in discussion, into the TS2, because the TS2 is the only commercial zone on the West End, which is the geographic area that we're dealing with. And now that you've expanded TS2, and there's the outside, not outside, there's a pretty good chance that TS2 could be recommended to be expanded further. That's not the small hidden location that it used to be. It's probably gonna come into great focus now, or greater focus. And I think that you need to, you take a look at that.
Good. Thank you.
And while we're, while we're still working on this, we might, I mean, we were talking about meeting every week until the beginning of December, which is, you know, that's, that's intense, but it's also, I mean, until we've worked further through this.
Yeah, we'll probably revisit that, Walter. What we decided last night was that we were gonna meet on a weekly basis and try to have ten or eleven or twelve meetings, week after week after week, so that we could get our work focused, number one. We thought, at least in my mind, I thought it was conceivable and possible that we could do that, because we were dealing with a specific area. We're dealing with the whole town, or a lot of different zones. And I thought if we could focus on one area and keep everybody on track, we could get this done probably, and have everything ready to be presented to you by the first of the year. I'm not sure that's gonna happen.
But we didn't, yeah, we didn't decide. We were definitely gonna do it every week we considered.
Okay. Well, let's...
That's the direction I'm going.
Okay. I appreciate that. So, let's do this. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time, either for or against, that's in the room? I know you do, Mr. Jolly, and we're going to hear your testimony related to it. Okay.
No, I'd like to...
Oh, sure. Peter, yes.
Peter Jolly, ninety-five Prairie Street. I think many of the arguments are for to oppose bulk propane storage in the C4 zones applied to the issue of putting into an I-1 or I-2 zone. Did you look at the map, which is often due when they're revising charts and tables?
We did.
Well, but there is one here, sitting up on the...
Okay. Well, we have them on. Everybody has one of this.
The argument is about putting propane storage in, you know, 500 feet of the kind of green is the argument against putting on the solid site applies to, you know, putting it here. And I kind of got that, which is what you're proposing. So, I would say all the testimony that you heard from neighbors and those in opposition to, you know, that side, that's probably is the case as well.
Okay. I mean, are there sites in town that you think it would be appropriate?
Well, certainly not in the center of town.
Well, no, I know, but that's, my question is, are there sites that would be appropriate in town, in your opinion?
Well, I don't know. I hadn't studied it.
Okay.
Now, we're bordering on an open application if we start talking about that.
Well, I just, yeah, I just wanted to know, you know, to sort of, the judge, if we were saying that's not appropriate, are there places that are? But we'll get to that later. All right.
Did you talk about a date to continue the hearing?
Well, that's what I'm gonna do now, is I think at this point...
Anything on ten-two is small, just like twelve.
Right. What I would like to do is, because of the late hour, we're obviously not gonna finish this, and we're even obviously further from a vote on anything than finishing the discussion. So, what I would propose we do is hold a special meeting where this would be the only item on the topic. What I would like to do is have the opinion of town council as to was this or was this not adequate notice? If it wasn't, then we would correct the notice for that special meeting. My feeling is it is, but, you know, we'll see what our council says. So, George, I guess I would ask, when would be a time when we could get a meeting together?
That's hard to determine right now, because we have, obviously have to make sure that most of you are available, and also make sure we have a room. So, it's pretty hard to identify a specific date, like right now.
Okay.
What I would suggest is you continue the hearing to our next regular meeting, and that we try to find another date subsequent to that, fairly soon after that, for a special meeting, and we'll work on that between now and then.
Okay. That's fine with me, so...
I don't think we'll find something between now and then.
Yeah.
And we won't be able to obviously identify the date now, so I would...
That's fine with me. So, why don't we do that, George, if you can, and then communicate with the members to make sure that we can get as many of us there as possible.
Right. And make sure we have a meeting room and all that sort of...
All right. So, then I guess what I would like to do is have a motion to continue this to a special meeting at a time to be designated as soon as George can...
No, I think, I think you need to...
To the next regular meeting.
I think you need to continue to the second.
Okay.
And then at that meeting, if we decide we can't finish it, then we'll, and we'll have a special meeting in our pocket at least subsequent to that.
Okay. Fair enough. All right. Can we get a motion then?
Move to continue to our next regular meeting.
So, all favor?
Ten-two.
Okay. It's open and it's continued. Is Mr. DeLuca here for...
He's not here.
All right, George, why don't we continue that?
Right.
And if you could just advise Mrs. DeLuca that we didn't take it up, so I'd like to get a motion that we continue the DeLuca matter.
So, move.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have a CAM site plan, Town of Guilford Parks and Rec. This is property located at Chittenden Park Field Road and Seaside Avenue. This is a CAM site plan, boardwalk and reviewing, and viewing platform within 100 feet of the critical coastal resources.
I move it.
Receive instead of hearing for ten sixteen.
I move it. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
We have a couple of bills to pay here. Shore Publishing, $306.34, and Royal Printing for $91. Can I get a motion on the bills?
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Having no further business on the agenda, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.